It's now seven oh three. Planning Board meeting for August tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Welcome all this evening. Our chairman is running a few minutes late, so we're going to do some accounting and a few other items while we wait for his arrival.
I'll move the agenda.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes from the meeting held on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen.
One second. There's no changes.
No changes. Move to the next one.
Okay. Move to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes from the meeting held on July thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Let's look at that.
And finally, move to approve the Situate Planning Board meeting minutes for the meeting held on May fourth, two thousand and seventeen.
Let's look at that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was not at one of them, so I guess I can, I have to abstain the July thirteenth, but the other two, a, yes. Aye. So, two-thirds of them, I'll say aye.
So, now we have some accounting. Move to approve the requisition of three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents to Gatehouse Media for legal advertisements in the Situate Mariner, for five thousand and thirteen dollars and fifty-nine cents to Sycamore Properties LLC for return of the common driveway bond for seven hundred countryway, for one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars to Henry Homes for refund of the unexpected, unexpended construction inspection funds for seven hundred countryway, for two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cents to Amory Engineers for construction inspections for Thirteenth Ford Place, for two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars to Merrill Corporation for engineering peer review for Curtis Estates, and for one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to Merrill Corporation for construction inspections and plan review for five twenty-nine through five thirty-one countryway.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have something relating to the Municipal Modernization Act. I move that the board redesignate Ann Burbine to sign bills under the Municipal Modernization Act, and I move that the board designate Benjamin S. Bornstein as backup to sign bills under the Municipal Modernization Act effective August tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many signatures Karen, do we need on the bills?
Just one.
Just one?
Ben can sign them.
Ben can sign the bills.
Okay.
Okay, so.
He'll be good.
I know. He's very fortunate.
Hen's gonna get tired.
All right. Do we want to deal with layers on reports, or? How about the town planner report? Or do we want to wait for that?
We can.
Okay. I don't know, can we do the Form A for Summer Street? Okay, then we'll do the Form A.
They might be coming.
Oh. At quarter of ten?
You were gonna move them up on any number.
No, not unless we needed to.
I thought you were saying we take an hour and a half on Ann Burbine, I know that you were gonna move them up.
Yeah, I didn't tell them, no.
Okay, well, which way do you want it?
Why don't we just leave them the way they are?
Okay. All right, you know what? I think what we need to do is just recess this.
Yes.
Until the chairman shows. We can't really go forward with this public hearing until he is here, and I apologize for your inconvenience.
Does it schedule another recent, do you have a date for the next one?
Excuse me? The next what? No.
No, just for.
It's just, we are going to hold off this public hearing for hopefully five, another five minutes until Mr. Pritchard arrives. All set?
All set.
All right, you're all set.
Great. Have we voted the agenda yet?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Then we're on number one on the agenda. Again, I apologize to everyone for being late. I try not to do that. Sometimes the MBTA doesn't cooperate. So, first on our agenda is a public hearing for flexible open space definitive subdivision for Ninety and Vinyl Road, and I see we have the proponents here, I take it?
Yes.
Why don't we start off with introductions?
Great. My name's Bill Aronberger. I'm here on, talking with my partner Jeff Delisi on behalf of the applicant well-being builders. We have time well builders, we have Don Gillespie and Paul Sharon Senior with us. Also from Ross Engineering is Paul Maravito and Greg Tansey. And just a little bit of a backdrop before, I think Paul will give an overview of this, before we get into, because I believe procedurally we have to address the conventional density sketch first, but I think an overview of the project is important. But since we last met in the winter, and what has happened is we had a, we had a pre-application meeting where we showed you our conventional plan, and we discussed the preference of the planning board if we could have a flexible open space, and so based on the, based on the advice and what we did, we went forward, we've designed all of that. So far, to date, one of the things that the request in the town from an environmental standpoint and also from a technological standpoint, there is a common system for sixteen houses, which the Board of Health recently approved, which I believe you have the referral comments in there from them, so that has been in effect, and I believe you've received some, I've got copies from Karen, all of the recent sundry things. One of the other things which happened during the winter is we, the Curtis house that's on the property, is an older homeless here, we appeared before the demolition, under the demolition bylaw review, and clients are gonna retain the house and do some renovation to the house and to keep that, and accordingly, we don't have to go before, you only have to go on the demolition bylaw if you're actually gonna demolish something, we're not gonna demolish it, what we're actually gonna do is to move this onto one of the lots that's on the house and to preserve the house, and I think you got a letter from the chairman of the Historical Commission appreciative of that. But I think that's a brief history, but Paul, why don't you give us an overview?
Just for purposes of refreshing everyone's mind, this is a plan that was submitted back, I think, January this year. This is what we call the conventional density plan. It's a, this is what a standard subdivision would look like. This is also a copy of the plan that was reviewed by the Board of Health to determine whether or not the site was suitable for up to sixteen lots. They also based their decision on a review and thorough review, and they have all the test pits and more development of the site, there's probably over a hundred of them. This next drawing is the existing conditions plan. It shows the perimeter of the parcel to be overlided, as I said, divided. It's approximately fifteen acres in size. There's a wetland to the easterly portion, that's a bordering vegetated wetland, there's a small isolated wetland down here, which is being made. The parking lot for the buses and the school property is right here, and they have a catch basin, they drain all the water onto this site, and that's what created the wetland. This wetland line, the, both the bordering vegetated line and the isolated wetland line has been confirmed by the Conservation Commission. Existing on-site is the old historic home that Bill just talked about, and there's two well buildings here. There's an existing gravel driveway coming in, which we plan to keep, the wraps essence and magnets to the common leaching area, which I'll show you later on. This yellow line represents the perimeter of the property. This is the end of the road, there's an existing subdivision to the north, which abuts the property, Townsend Road. There's homes here which run on Central Drive. This next line I'm gonna put out.
Paul, before you leave that, while you've got that there, the existing site plan, could you just explain the topography, kind of how?
Sure.
How things are set up right now and how stormwater flows off of it?
This is the high point of the land. This is elevation thirty-six, or thirty-six feet above sea level, and from here, the land in here slopes off toward the wetland, and goes down to the salt marsh down in the back of the, the Hadley Country Club. This area in here, and this area here, and everything from this room, this is like a dome, and from here, the water runs in this direction, runs back here, runs here, and it runs down into here, but most of it ends up over in this corner. And we've taken that all into account with drainage, which.
No, I just wanted to understand what the existing topography looked like.
This is the drawing that, okay, the next drawing I'm gonna show you, it's a proposed layout of the houses that would be built into the flexible open space of development. The entrance would be off of Vinyl Road and go up to a cul-de-sac, and there's a smaller one coming out to the right. This is, this is the same concept that we showed you back there, but only the share longer the conventional density plan. This is the wetland line that I just described, one down here. This is the perimeter going around the entire parcel, and this, this line here is the backside of the house lots, here. The septic system leaching area for all of the houses is gonna be in this area here. There will be no septic systems anywhere in here, it will be all down in the open field that you can see from the street. The, the existing house sits right in this location here, it's about halfway into the roadway layout, so this is the field to the, in, right in front of the house. Again, there's sixteen lots here. There's a, there's a stormwater basin in this area. There's two smaller ones here, and there's one in this location. And the rest of this area outside the house lots would be open space. This next drawing is also an overview, again, to smaller scale. It shows the four stormwater basins, one, two, three, and four. Shows the septic system in the lots, and in the wetland. This is a larger scale plan, it's a blow-up, but this shows is where the stormwater basins would be, and this is the property line between the proposed site and the homes on Townsend Road. There'd be a basin here, what happens is the water will come off the cul-de-sac, it'll go into a pipe system, it'll go into the basin, and then head right down toward the wetland. This site's migrated, so nothing goes onto the abutting properties. There's a basin here that looks like water, eventually run down into here, and this basin looks like water from this side of the property, and it's all proposed to go off to this side here and back in the street. Under the stormwater bylaw, the volume of the water leaving the site will be equal to or less than what is there now. Normally, we, we would only mitigate the peak rate of flow, but this will make sure that there's no increase in the amount of water that moves the site. That's, that's one of the newer regulations the town imposes on site development. This, this last drawing, this is the concept that we presented on this plan for, for the sewers, for the, for the septic systems. These are the proposed houses. Each house will have its own septic tank that will go into a sewer line in the street, it'll flow downhill gradually into a pump chamber, it'll be pumped up into a common leaching area, called the active system, and the reserve system will be constructed at the same time. So, if this system were to ever fail, the reserve system would be in place. The shared septic system design has been submitted to the Board of Health, and we're waiting for their review and comments on it. So, I think with that, I'll end this part of the presentation, and I'll turn it over.
Bill. All right, so I think the first thing is before we proceed on this, we have to address the conventional density sketch in the first aspect, and then.
Can you put that back up there?
Sure. Paul, you put the conventional density sketch back up there? So, that's the conventional density sketch as we appeared before the board in January. And one of the things we discussed in January was, as you'll see, was submitted to you by the zoning enforcement officer, his opinion that the sixteen lots on this are proper for the conventional density purposes, and he went through the bylaw provisions on the radius of curves, and also on the lots there that are fifty-foot lots that, that have double the upwind square footage and that. His thing that, these are customarily granted, I actually use a stronger word than that, I've never had one, and dozens of them, that was not granted. And so, that's the basis on, which we had this, I think Paul can get into some other things, the Board of Health has reviewed the test perks and all that, and they submitted their letter approving. Paul, what did they, I don't have the letter, I have my standpoint, but you went through that with them, and they voted?
Yeah, they voted with a series of conditions, some of which we would do anyway with the shared septic system. One of the things that they asked us to do was have a written mosquito control plan for each of the stormwater basins. They don't want any plantings on the leaching field, which we would never put anyway. They want a deed restriction for each house, saying it can only be a four-bedroom house, because the system was designed for four bedrooms in each house. They want an operation and maintenance plan, which is a requirement for a shared system, and they asked that if we do a shared system, which we are doing, that each house have its own septic tank. That's not a requirement, it's just a much, you know, it's a much level, it's a much higher level of protection for that leaching area, because everyone's pretty much responsible on their own for what they put down their, you know, in the septic tanks.
Those comments are all applying to the conventional subdivision.
No.
Is that what we're talking about right now?
Well, it's both. What they're saying is if you're gonna have a shared.
I'd like to sort of bifurcate this thing and talk about the conventional.
No, I, yeah, okay.
And make sure that anything that we need to address on the conventional subdivision plan, we address, so we agree on, you know, what the appropriate number of lots are.
Okay, so we'll leave that there.
Could you just go through and explain which lots are done by right and which ones would require a special permit?
Three, four, six, and seven are fifty, are four lots that are, have less than a hundred feet of frontage, but double the upwind area required in the R2 district.
Yeah, I just asked, pointed out in case there's somebody from the audience that they did.
These, these lots look like fifty, but they're actually sixty feet. These are a cul-de-sac.
You stand in front of that.
Slide over so people can see, yeah.
These other lots you see look like they're fifty feet, but they're actually sixty feet, because if you're on the curb, less than, less than a hundred feet, or less than, sixty feet in diameter, then you can have a lot frontage with only sixty feet of frontage, so we've got one, so we're three, four lots on the cul-de-sac. These are not special permit lots. There's only four of them, three, four, six, and seven.
So, all of the development area on those lots is way in the back? Kind of how, they're sort of keyhole lots? I know we had a review also of the, of the plan by Merrill, and it was of the conventional plan, so it might be appropriate to hear on that as well. It seemed like there were quite a number of potentially open issues on this.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Thelma, right from Merrill Engineers and Land Services. Our review actually consisted of a review of the, of the non-conventional subdivision. It was just primarily the stormwater management policy, as well as the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of oil. The plan we reviewed was the special permit plan, I guess.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood that then. So, all of these apply to the special, to the flexible open space subdivision?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay. Did you review at all the conventional plan?
No.
Okay. Laura?
Did we hear it, because that's how we kind of split up the responsibilities? So, the planning board on a flexible open space plan has to find that the flexible plan is superior to a conventional subdivision plan, and the zoning bylaw has several standards that are supposed to be looked at, and those include whether the natural historic features of the land are preserved, and certainly the historic houses being preserved, whether the construction of the buildings and the roads respects the natural features of the parcel, minimizes changes to topography, doesn't disturb the site beyond the paved area of the road, provides buffers to wetlands, and so on. So, one of the things I think that can't help but come up is what the density is going to be, that you're going to approve, and the way these bylaws generally work, and I think this one is very similar, if you wanted to, I'm guessing you could get an opinion from town council if you really wanted to do that, I don't think that it's really necessary, but it's generally to see how many lots would be allowed by right without special permits or any other type of vote being required. The same way when you're appraising a piece of land, you're not looking at, excuse me, I'll just finish and then, you know, we'll take turns. So, when, when a house is appraised, they don't look at the potential for an accessory dwelling and add-on, an extra, you know, a couple hundred thou, because you could potentially have an accessory dwelling there. It's just looking at the property as it is, what can you do with it without any special laws? So, I think that needs to be taken into consideration. There were a number of interesting issues that were brought up. The DPW has a concern about protecting a potential wellsite that's nearby, and I think there also may be the need to look at some traffic issues, where you've got sixteen lots on a fairly small road, but I think the first thing you need to do is to think about the number of lots.
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment to that, I respectfully disagree with Laura. And to fresh everyone's recollection, we were here seven months ago and discussed this issue to the nth degree, for the simple reason is, this is vastly superior, our conventional density sketch has zero open space, and we can do that as of right. And what I indicated was, and the consensus of the board was, is it's too expensive, my clients have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars engineering this, and what I told you that night in the winter, is if you want us to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, in order to do that, I will get a letter from the zoning enforcement officer confirming what I say, which I've done. If you want us to do that, and we're gonna engineer the road as a conventional thing, that's the way we're building it. And, and the thought process, everyone said, well, this is a vastly superior use of the land, buffers for neighbors, more than several acres of open space, so that's the way we proceeded, and there's nothing in the bylaw that says that it's what you can do, and in over twenty-five years, if I've had thirty to forty, fifty-foot lot applications, I'm forty for forty, and I think Bob Vogel and Neil Duggan confirm that is, it's a, it's a given, if you go back to the historical basis on which the predecessor bylaw or the town situated adopted it, it was a very obvious reason, and the reason was, if you look at the geometry, when you have a subdivision, the nature of the geometry with, with the lot width of such, is you end up with a boatload of unused land, and the only way you can access that land is by having lots that are less than that. The other thing is to do this, you gotta remember the fifty-foot bylaw lot, section six, six-ten-point-two-B. That's not, that's not a bylaw creating a lot, that's a bylaw saying, under subdivision control, you create the lots, that is a bylaw saying whether you can build on the lots. So, six-ten-point-two-B doesn't create lots, it says you can build on the lots, that's what it says. Under subdivision control under, under A and R, any lot that has, any lot that has frontage that meets health and safety requirements is a lot that can be used.
Which, what was the reference you made, six-ten-two?
Two-B.
Two-B.
The other aspect of this also, just from a land use standpoint, is by virtue of having these lots, otherwise lots that would be entitled to build a duplex on, are limited to a single-family dwelling. So, from a density standpoint, actually do it in that manner, you're actually reducing the density that is otherwise allowed.
Any thoughts on that?
Yep. I think there's a precedent that, and Laura, keep me honest, when we did the Hennessy property, didn't we come back up and assume that there were gonna be two of the wetland crossings, when we figured out the conventional density?
Wetlands crossings related to this as?
Related to determining what the, the conventional density would be.
Meaning to the maximum number of lots?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Meaning that, I, I'm not really following your argument, and I don't remember.
Okay.
Actually, I was at that hearing, the answer to that question is yes. I think what Open Worthless Limbaka's mind is saying is if it's, if it's a, if there's a probability that a permit, the whole purpose of the flexible open space bylaw is if you the, the whole purpose of the flexible open space bylaw is if you want, if you want people to actually get the permits, there's no reason to have a flexible open space bylaw. It's sufficient to demonstrate that it's achievable. And, and point taken, a, a wetlands crossing is a lot more stringent criteria from a land use issue. And I could get through chapter and verse of, of, of other flexible open spaces I've been involved with where we've done these things.
Maybe I can say what, what I was going to say a different way. The wetlands regulations have nothing to do with your role under the zoning bylaw. Your role under the zoning bylaw has to do with enforcing when it says the conventional, the planning board's role. The conventional density sketch plan shall show the number of lots which could be developed under current zoning and the subdivision regulations. And it doesn't really refer to wetlands crossings at all. It's not what you're giving them.
Yeah, but, but, but to take up the point is if you don't have a wetlands crossing, then none of that land is accessible or included or usable for lots. So you get to the same, get to the same point.
Well, I think.
I think you guys are summarizing my points very nicely, except I'm not sure it's the one that I'm making.
All right, make your point.
In addition to a matter by right, what we, what we did with the Hennessy property was to come back up and make the assumption, which based on all the experience we have with the ZBA and CONCOM, was that it's the second wetland crossing would be allowed. And it would be the one as a matter, the first that CONCOM looked at. The second was one that was assumed that could be done to determine what the conventional density was.
I, I think there's, maybe I can, maybe you're going the same place I am. So here's, here's kind of what I'm thinking.
Take me there, Paul. When I open my eyes, if it's the same spot, I'll tell you.
And I think we've discussed this in the past too, is that in this particular sort of, zoning activity, we have this, this sort of issue of we need to look at the conventional density in order to set the density for the flexible open space plan. And I, I tend to agree that it hardly makes sense to, to go to the nth degree to develop the conventional open space plan as if you could then, you know, send it out for bid and build it. But that it ought to have enough sort of meat on the bone so we can determine whether we agree with the conventional open space plan and, and agree with the lot sizes. And, and that should be enough for us to do the comparative analysis to the flexible open space plan with that sort of density that we might agree on, that hasn't actually been, fully prosecuted, basically. But that we can agree that, uh, for the purposes of the flexible open space plan, it's a good comparative. Right? Because what I'd really like to see is if, if we think this is the appropriate density, and I'm saying one way or the other on this, then how does the flexible open space plan compare to this? And what sort of benefits does it bring to the town situate by doing it that way as opposed to going down the path this way?
It's repetitive.
Yeah. And, and, and I think that's, the wetland crossing was one of those things where we said, you don't have to, actually have to go out and get it. But we think it makes, you know, it's, it sort of crosses the test of being possible to do. And therefore we would use that to set the density.
Yep.
But what I'm hearing is that there are three lots that don't fit the exact.
Four.
Oh, there's four lots?
Yeah.
Okay. That don't fit the, um, by right for the conventional.
Correct.
I also had a question about, I know that the flexible open space has the, um, the shared septic. Was if, again theoretically, if you were to develop that, was this thought of for the conventional as each pla, each lot would have its own septic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, um, I, I think that sort of the, the broad obligation on the planning board is whether it can be built under the existing zoning bylaws. The question is can we infer that they would be able to get permitted these fifty-foot lots? And that, I think that's really sort of the question on the table at this point.
Well, I think they could get the fifty-foot lots. Um, historically, that's what's happened. The only question I have, I have this thing about houses behind houses. And I see as you go up the cul-de-sac, there are these small, call them sixty-foot pieces. And then the houses are way, are sort of behind. And to me, that looks a little crowded.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at that one.
This one?
Yes.
This isn't the one we built?
Uh, excuse me?
So this isn't the plan that we would build?
That's the plan you would build?
Would not build.
No, this is not the plan.
Right, but this is the one we're trying to determine whether that's the right thing.
Well, that's what we're trying to determine. And I'm saying that it appears to me with sixteen lots and one, two, three of them up top are sort of sandwiched together. And I'm wondering if we might not be better off in a conventional with thirteen. You've got sixteen, what if we backed it down to fifteen or fourteen? Which would give things a little bit more elbow room. And then when you move it into the flexible, you have even more space, a nicer area, a little bit more open space, and everything doesn't look as smushed together.
Well, two things. One, the reason why we have the flexible open space and the economics dictates it, that's the bottom line, is they are very nice the way, and that's why, that's why we're doing it this way.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm.
Well, I, I think the question here is, is this layout designed appropriately to the zoning board? Or to the zoning requirements, even if they're a little tight, right?
Then I guess.
You know, if we were sitting here just looking at this, um, is this something that could be built basically under the current, um, zoning regulations? And, you know, obviously all of them but for four could be done sort of as of right, assuming this meets all of the setback requirements and all of that in that.
Sure.
That's kind of our going in assumption.
Sure, absolutely.
This meets all those requirements. It's really about the fifty-foot lots.
Yeah.
The issue is, do we want to, is it worth their time and our time to send them back to get the fifty-foot lots just to come in and have the same answer?
Right. My concern are the three sixty-foot lots. Sixty-foot that are up further.
Sixty-foot lots?
That, that's what the bylaw says on the radius of a curve. That's the frontage in every single lot we have this. But just for the, just for the audiences here, because they don't have this in front of them, this is what the zoning enforcement officer says. Precedent in practice concerning these types of special permits, all but assure that these permissions would be granted without difficulty. That's what its language says. And that's when I was here before. That's the, that's the basis.
We appreciate that input and I think.
No, no, I said that for the audience. I know, I know you have it, but they don't have it in front of them, just so they're hearing what the discussion is.
Yeah, they say that's a planning board decision, so we'll, we take that under advisement, right, so. But I, I guess where I'm going with this is, um, I'm happy to sort of put a, put a pin in the, the side, the number of lots, for the purposes of doing the comparison to the flexible open space plan and what that looks like. So, that's sort of how I, I mean, I haven't, haven't really sort of analyzed it compared to this and would like to understand what the benefits are of what you're proposing.
Sure. But, but the point, the point I get is procedurally, how this has to proceed is, A, the conventional density sketch has to be approved. By approving the conventional density sketch, you're not approving this project.
Right, we're approving the density.
Then you go, then you go through all the criteria, whether it meets the bylaw criteria.
Right.
So by approving the conventional density sketch, you can still vote against this if you, if you want.
Right. But we are approving the density, which is important. Because what you've done is you've done a flexible open space for sixteen lots.
Just as we showed you eight months ago.
Right. And I think at that time, we expressed, um, great benefit in the flexible open space. But I think we also, all of us had concerns about the density. And that's where we're at right now, is looking at that density. If I remember right, we all expressed that it might be a little bit high.
That's, that's, that's not my recollection. We wouldn't have designed the project. We would have just built a conventional plan. Wouldn't, we wouldn't have spent two hundred thousand dollars to build this if we had to do it another way.
Well, like I said, I think we all endorsed the idea of the flexible open space. It was just the exact number of lots. And that was still, I don't think we actually agreed on anything at that point. At least that was my recollection.
Yeah, well, I think we very carefully said that, um, we only know what we know at that point and it's all subject to what actually gets filed. And so this is what has been filed. So it's really a question of whether, at this point, um, we would agree with the density or not. Any other?
Um, yeah, I, I have, I have a question regarding the conventional sketch that, as it currently appears. Paul, could I, could I see the, um, the, uh, flexible open space, uh, site plan if that's possible? I just don't want to unfold my papers. Yeah, yeah, just to, just to hold them up. So, um, one thing that is apparent in this is that there's pretty large sections, square footage of land that's being used for stormwater, um, control as well as the combined septic. I'm not saying that, you know, I understand it doesn't make sense to fully engineer the stormwater and septic before the conventional versus flexible decision is made. But I would really kind of like to see, and it's kind of pointed out to some extent in the subdivision rules and regulations about what needs to be included in a plan. I'd like to kind of see what the proposed septic in the conventional plan would be as well as the stormwater controls, which are also going to be a requirement of, of any subdivision that goes in. Because that's going to take up real estate and it'd be nice to know how it fits in with all of the lots and what the setbacks are and all of that.
Just to answer your question, as far as the septics and the conventional density, you would have to have a septic system on each lot. And the Board of Health ruled on that. What, what, what they reviewed was the, uh, conventional density plan and our test pit plans. And there's a, a packet of soil logs about this thing. We gave you ten copies of those logs.
How about, I, I think that's useful. How about, can we see the, where the stormwater plan is on a conventional density? Where the stormwater?
The conventional plan, what, what it says is to describe what your, a method of stormwater would be. And what we mentioned on the conventional, um, on the conventional density plan, what we would do, because we didn't, we didn't have to do the actual stormwater design. We'd have a series of basins on the lots that would be under twenty-five hundred square feet. We could have rain gardens.
Can we see that?
What I'm saying is, I'm.
Can we see the other plan?
What I'm saying is, rules and regulations cannot tell us to go out and design those. What I mentioned back in February was that if we were to do a stormwater design, we're stuck in the subdivision. We'd have a series of stormwater basins on the lots, under twenty-five hundred square feet, so they wouldn't have to be on a separate parcel. We could introduce rain gardens, water quality swales. We could have roof leaders for all the houses. The whole purpose of that was to treat the water, but also not have an increase in the volume. And based upon the soil testing here, the soils were very conducive to doing that. But again, your rules and regulations say that for the conventional density, we only have the state working, uh, technical designer. You know, you know, going back to the output and what needs stormwater for as well. There's, there's fifteen acres here. It's half acres only. We've got sixteen lots. The lots are probably three quarters of an acre or larger on, on average, where they're only recorded to be a half acre. So, there was one advantage to this. And again, part of the reasons we have the fifty-foot lots, the lots have to be at least an acre and some of these are larger than acre for the septic. So, I don't think it answered your question.
I think the fundamental question maybe that you're getting at, Ben, is, is stormwater management to our regulations viable on this design? Could this be built and manage all the stormwater?
Absolutely. And I say that based upon the soil testing we did out there and the, um, opportunities we have afforded to us to do the different types of, uh, implementation of stormwater mitigation measures.
I guess we're trying to get a little bit further beyond the word absolutely and, and sort of understand how it would be done.
Well, part, uh, part of, you know, part of.
You can't do it into the wetlands, right?
No. But one of the basic things you need to know, what I, I know is what kind of soils are you dealing with? I mean, we, we have a soil test pit plan that we gave you. There's, there's well over a hundred test pits up there on sixteen lots. And, and those have all been recorded with you and the Board of Health. And it shows that the soils are suitable. The stormwater designs that we did do for the flexible open space uses that information as well. One of the things we did do, just jumping ahead, one of the things the flexible open space allowed us to do was to use some of the wooded areas as, as, you know, um, in the area of the stormwater basins, there's a large buffer of trees that are going to stay with the flexible open space because of the way we designed the stormwater. But that's, that's further down the road.
Can we, I know it's a qualitative answer as opposed to maybe a quantitative, but, um, what's your sense on?
Well.
The stormwater design with the conventional plan?
I, when I did my review, there is a lot of soil testing, um, available, but I actually recommended additional soil testing in the location of the stormwater basins. Part of that was because I had some difficulty looking at the original soil testing information as far as the location and superimposing the flexible open space design on it. It's a relatively high groundwater. That is one of my concerns. So I, I really would not, I don't feel like I can comment on it. Um, I think if, um, you could basically take a similar volume or area and just overlay it on the conventional, um, but I still do think that additional soil testing is warranted to, to make sure that the systems are going to work. Anytime there's a high groundwater, you, you, you have to be careful with your stormwater. So, that was one of my, um, comments as far as the, the, the system for the open space. So it would apply to the conventional as well.
But, but it's not out of the realm of.
No, it's not out of the realm. Um, I think, um.
I think part of what we're trying to ascertain is, is the conventional plan as submitted buildable, right?
Well, not with, not with the system they have now, not with the layout they, they have now actually. Because if I'm, I haven't seen this plan, so if you don't mind, I'll just.
Yeah, absolutely.
Over here. And Paul, you can jump over to Craig's if you want, but, um, on the flexible open space, these, this area here was all stormwater. This was stormwater. There was a, uh, water quality swale here. Now, this lot looks huge, but this was, I believe this was stormwater. So, um, if that could be overlaid, I think it would change the layout. It may not change the lot, lot count, but I think it would change the layout of this particular subdivision. Of, of this conventional.
But it wouldn't necessarily change the lot count?
Well, it might. I mean, some of those basins are, are large. So then they might require it to be on their own lot if that's the case.
And what I stated earlier was in the conventional, we would not have basins over twenty-five hundred square feet because they'd have to be on their own parcels. If we're doing individual house lots, you know, you think your stormwater bylaw now for, for one vacant lot anywhere in town, you have to have a stormwater design for that one lot with one house on it, okay? Everything can fit on that one house lot with stormwater. We, we make it work. There's a lot of things that afford us to, uh, uh, come up with a design that'll work. The same thing would apply to the conventional subdivision plan. Because the point is you can't have an increase in the volume of water leaving that site. And I, I mentioned earlier some of the things that we, you know, that we would employ in that design. The stormwater design we have for the flexible open space would not be the same as for a conventional density plan because it's apples and oranges.
Yes, Laura?
I think, um, Paul's forgetting or, or not including all the stormwater from the subdivision. I don't think it's really comparable to the major blocks because we've got a whole row to deal with that we wouldn't have. We're talking about.
No, we, no, we did figure it out.
Okay.
I think I was just trying to get to. I think I was just trying to get to a point where, to try to get to answer Ben's question as to whether this could be built and the stormwater could be managed. However, they have to engineer it, it can be managed. In a layout like this, they wouldn't need to eliminate lots to do it, basically.
Well, I have a procedural question. Let's just say theoretically, we say that, you know, there are 16 lots, that that's, we approved that for the conventional sketch. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to approve 16 for the flexible open space, correct? Or am I wrong?
No, that sets the density, the maximum density.
It's the maximum, right?
For the flexible open space.
But it doesn't mean that.
But it also gives a flexibility on frontage and setbacks and all the other things that come with flexible open space, right? So it allows them to have a little more density for the houses.
Because I just wanted to comment that I agree with Ann in that on the flexible, now jumping ahead, because this is setting the density, but on the flexible open space plan, there are three lots that are behind two lots and that bothers me. Even on the new, on the plan that we would potentially approve. That to me doesn't look right for a nice subdivision. I wouldn't want those houses. So therefore, that's what I'm concerned with setting this density.
How many do we have here?
Three.
Same issue, right? Three lots that are, houses that are back, right?
That's what it would appear to be.
It's really hard to tell with all those yellow lines.
We have this one behind, this one's a pork chop back here. This one's probably going to look like it's off on its own, but then, let's see. I'm really only seeing maybe one. But this is just the conventional density plan, this is what they're actually going to build.
Right.
No, no, yeah, I understand.
Well, you'd have sort of lot eight and lot seven behind, like if this was the street, right? You'd see lot nine as a house. You'd see, so you'd have one, two.
Is that the conventional plan?
This is the conventional, yes. You'd have.
I can't really tell.
I can't tell either.
You'd have at least, no, you'd have at least two lots that would be behind other ones.
You'd have eight?
Lot eight and lot seven, because lot seven would be behind lot nine.
Yeah. That's the conventional right there, right?
And on the flexible, as you see there on the, you'd have.
You'd get three.
Yeah, exactly, you'd have three lots, right there where Laura has her hand, behind the two in front. And I just don't know how that would work as far as aesthetics and just in general.
I think there's a line to walk between, can I build them or can I make them look the way that I want them to look or look different? I think what we're looking at here is can I build them? Whether they're behind each other, they're all in a row, whether they're staggered.
Well, which is what I was kind of getting at, is in the sense of, like the way I was looking at it, it's like, okay, I'm going to potentially agree to 16 is the fact that they could build this. They're not going to, but they could. But then when it comes to the flexible open space, I don't like that. So therefore, could we reduce it, but you're saying no.
I'm saying the maximum density on the flexible open space is whatever we define the density on the conventional space, right? So if we define the conventional as 16, then that's the maximum density for the flexible open space.
If I can interject and answer Richard's question, is on the flexible law, that isn't written in stone. Look at all the open space that's around there. You can, because of the flexibility, the land use that's given on the flexible thing, you can shrink the frontage on these lots, expand the frontage, shrink the square footage. So in other words, if that's something that you find, something that you want the engineers to look at, to flex that and to do that, then that's something they can do. Right, Paul? No, but to get back to the other point I made, just by way of clarification on the density thing, and from a drainage standpoint, we make this, but if you notice, if you look in what the requirements of conventional density sketch says, under the current zoning and subdivision regulations, it does not say stormwater bylaw, just, that's an important issue. Because the fact, it's the same conceptual, it's the better use of land. If someone has to engineer this for a conventional, no one is ever going to do something like this because the cost of designing two identical things is just, people don't spend an extra couple hundred thousand dollars on conjecture.
Yeah, I think we were trying to get more to the point is, is this a buildable subdivision, right? And people have come in and said, well, of course we could build it. If we build a 40-foot wall and run the road on top of the wall, of course we can build it. And, you know, you get to the absurd, right? And so that's what we're trying to establish here, is that we've got a conventional subdivision plan that's buildable.
No, I understand that, and I think in your conventional subdivision.
Why we were asking the question about whether you could actually manage the stormwater that you would create.
Yeah, exactly. And the topography of this, this isn't an odd site where there's all kinds of wetlands fingers and there's ledge and cliffs and valleys. It's a pretty evenly sloping lot. And the emphasis, Paul said, not to lose sight of this, is, you know, the open space and the ability to save vegetation is one of the driving things to this design.
Right, and we'll get to that, right? You asked, is it look at the conventional subdivision, right?
Yeah, but the answer is, if we don't get over the first step, we're never going to get there.
Right. So I think that's what we should focus on right now. Any other questions or comments on the conventional?
I made my point.
It's going to come, probably the discussion on the flexible. We talked about the Dolan Well, Zone 1, can you tell me, show me where that is, Paul?
The well, Paul.
The Dolan Well site.
Actually, Bill, I actually met with Sean McCarthy when I saw that comment today. Where that is, is kind of behind where Al Bangert's house is, where the railroad tracks is, behind Captain Pierce out in that area. And at least what Sean conveyed to me is 15 or 16 years ago, they're looking at this and for some reason, unbeknownst to him, it was just abandoned and now recently there is more to look at that. And the caveat to that is, if the selectmen, if the selectmen want us to tie into Townsor and to run the sewer line from Havelley in here and pay the bediments, we'll do it. That's a non-issue. If it's something that's in the future, but I know generally speaking, that's a selectman's call, but we have no issue whatsoever. Although it'd be more expensive to do it, we'd do that if the selectmen wanted us to do it.
Well, I think at some point, as Bill suggested, I'd be interested in seeing the zoom out that shows us where that is with respect to this development, but we don't need it right at this moment.
I think on the cover sheet of that plan, you can see it pretty clearly.
With the well identified and all that.
Oh, no, you can see where the railroad track is, where.
I mean, where the well would be and where the Zone 2 for the well would be and all that.
If memory serves me correctly, they put it on hold because of the impending coming of the railroad again. And they were concerned about contamination. So that's why they put it on hold.
Right.
I guess the reason I asked the question is, the location's going to be the same whether it's flexible or whether it's conventional. The question becomes, is that we keep doing less disturbance of the area under a flexible than we are under conventional?
I think we'll probably get to that question if we get to the flexible, right? So before we do that.
So we don't forget it.
Yeah. Before we do that, note that we have a lot of people in the audience here tonight and if there are any comments around sort of the proposed conventional layout, I'd be interested in taking those down. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Yep, Steve Covington, I'm a resident on Townsend Road. And there were several of us here back in late June, I believe it was, when we were discussing with, I don't know if it was the Inland Board or, we were discussing the wetland area. And in the course of that conversation, a few of us expressed concern from Sedwick, Bull Rush Farm, Townsend about the amount of water that is happening in that neighborhood right now and the potential for, you know, further exacerbation of that.
You're talking about stormwater?
Yeah. And so one of the things that Paul mentioned and has been mentioned here today is either the stormwater bylaw or I'm not sure exactly what the rule is, but talking about that there can't be an increase of the volume of water coming from that site. I guess my question is, how is that handled and like, how do you kind of prove or disprove that that is happening? So is it like a he said, she said, or how do you?
It's engineering calculations from the existing condition and then the revised engineering calculations based on the proposed design. Those are developed by the proponents, engineers, professional engineers. And then we actually hire our own peer review engineer, and that's Peter from Merrill Associates, to review all of that, to confirm that the, you know, all of the engineering work's being done in conformance with, you know, DEP standards and professional standards and all of that. So there's a fairly lengthy process we go through to do that.
I would say with the conventional though, we're kind of suspending that a little bit. I shouldn't say suspending it, but we're doing a preliminary of what could potentially be built. We're not asking them to do the engineering calculations.
I think that's the nature of considering a flexible open space plan is to have somebody develop a proposed conventional plan so we can at least set the maximum density for that flexible open space plan. And then once we move on to that piece, then there's a lot of issues that have to be addressed, including the major one being stormwaters as well. Yes?
Megan Mulcahy, I'm also on Townsend Road. I echo Steve's concerns about stormwater displacement. All of those houses take on water in every storm in the basement. So displacement of additional water is where we're concerned. And one of my questions around processes, I heard Peter say that he thought and recommended at one point additional soil testing. And I'm wondering if that is something that the Board and the Commission is going to.
Yeah, we'll address those comments. It's a little bit, it's procedural in nature here right now in that we're trying to get to a decision on the conventional design so that we can establish the maximum lot number of houses that can be built in the flexible. And then once we move to the flexible, we go through all of that, okay? And it's helpful to hear sort of the information about stormwater problems that exist today. Because oftentimes we don't actually hear that from some of the abutting neighborhoods, so. Was there somebody else?
Well, no, you're on the conventional, you're on the density problem right now, right? And you'll get to the stormwater issue.
Oh, you need to identify yourself for the TV, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You need to identify yourself.
Philip Cahill, I'm here on behalf of my parents who own the eighty Townsend Road.
Got you, thank you.
And that's the concern, I think that's the concern of most of the people here. And I don't know if you have existing studies of the flooding that occurs, but there's tremendous flooding at the end of that road, Townsend Road. And I think people are very conservative, they're not adding to that, but maybe there's something that could be done to reduce that.
I'm not aware of existing studies, are you Laura?
No, I'm not.
Have you run across anything?
Us?
Paul? No. Were you aware of the problems there?
Over at Townsend Road?
Yeah.
We could share, I actually have video, I have video of water falling there.
We'll get into that.
Yeah, you say something. Just to let you all know, I live in Bull Rush Farm. And I am well aware, because I've been there for 35 years, of what you deal with down on Townsend. And I've seen it flowing down the driveways and it is a real issue. I know that there's a pond behind Arthur Beal's house, which has nothing to do with this. And then it runs through, used to be Shirley Logan's house, they're long gone. And then the marsh or whatever is right behind me between Pennycrest and Townsend. And I know that in the storm of 91, the house at the very, very far end of Townsend, there was water in it from the storm. So, you know, there was a number, a myriad of issues, but who is to say that if this is done correctly, as we will ensure that if it goes forward, it will be, that you may be better off than you are now. I mean, that we can hope.
But the absolute standard is that you shouldn't be worse off.
Right.
Okay, so. Any other questions, comments on the conventional density?
Oh, a question, which one is this, flexible or?
That's the flexible.
Flexible.
That's the one they're proposing.
Yeah, that's the flexible.
I have one further question.
Yes.
Would you consider possibly, hopefully, cutting from 16 to 14 houses?
No.
No.
Because the utilization of the site and the way it's been engineered, you know, supports that, supports it well. There's a lot of open space, all these houses are being drawn away from all the abutting properties and all the neighbors.
I understand that. And you wouldn't go with 15, it has to be the 16. Okay, then, if this goes procedurally forward, I think we really do need to have a major discussion of houses behind houses.
Understood.
I have a real problem with that.
Yeah, I second that, I do too.
So somehow, some way, this all has to be flexed, if you will, to, you can make it better. I know you can.
Paul can redesign.
Paul can do that.
He's magic.
Yeah, where's your wand?
So at this point, I think we need to make a decision on the conventional?
You can, I mean, we looked at, you know, trying to figure out how to schedule the hearings and so on. Many of these types of developments, you didn't decide the first night, but you certainly can. If you do, there's kind of a format that you've used before where you make findings and then you wrote to approve the conventional density plan. It has to be a four out of five vote.
Right.
And I don't want to keep harping on, you know, the legal issues of this, but if you all wanted to do so, it might be interesting to just throw this up to Town Council and say, does this mean that the 50-foot frontage lots should be, you know, should be considered as viable lots in the conventional density plan?
What do you think?
I don't think that's necessary. I really don't. I think that.
I mean, it doesn't mean that he's going to agree with me or them or anybody else.
Right, but we know that the zoning Board of Appeals will give them the 50-foot frontage. They do.
Yeah, but I don't think that's the issue.
But what is the issue?
I think the issue is, what's allowed under zoning and how do you define allowed? Is it allowed by, just a sec, is it allowed by right or is it allowed with a special permit? And it actually would be two special permits because it would be first for the 50-foot frontage lot and then for the common driveway because you have to have common driveways for the two, you know, the two sets of frontage lots. Would each need one because they're two back to back.
I can speak to that?
Yes.
Two things, and again, get to the last thing first. You do not need, the only reason you need a common driveway is they're approved at the same time. So you can approve two of them in the next meeting, approve the other two and you don't need a common driveway. So that's number one. And number two, statutory construction, you don't read words into the plain meaning of things. And the plain words of this, it says. And the plain words of this, it says, under the current zoning. It doesn't say, under the current zoning excluding special permits. That's what you're trying to read into it. It doesn't say that. And statutorily, under our charter, if the zoning enforcement officer can't make a decision on zoning, then who the hell can?
Well, the planning board's empowered to make those decisions here.
Huh?
Right? So that's the decision.
No, no, interpretation of the zoning bylaw is a hundred percent within the province of the building commission, excuse me, of the zoning enforcement office.
They didn't say you would absolutely get it, right?
All but assured.
All but.
All but assured, would be granted without difficulty.
Okay. All but, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
It would have been, it is assured, but it's all but assured, right?
Well, nothing in this life is assured.
Exactly. Right? So, I mean, it's, it's a decision we have to make, in terms of whether we agree or not, and, you know, I-
We've gone through, excuse me, but we've got through a process where we've basically held off the approval of the conventional until the end, and basically made sure that the sub, the flexible was, was superior to it.
That's kind of where I was going, is that we need to hear more on it.
Once I come back up and I, and I bless the conventional, then in effect, I can't go back. Not that I expect to go back. But what it does is it assures you as you go along, each step that you take is showing how it's superior to the conventional.
That, all that would be is a vote of yes or no on the flexible open space subdivision at that point.
Yeah.
Right? And then they would, they would be allowed to go back to the conventional. That's not saying we would approve the conventional as it's, as it's presented here today either, right?
I mean, I get the sense the board is that the fact that there is agreement that the flexible is superior to the conventional.
Yeah. I guess I'd like to see a little bit, hear a little bit more about it, particularly how you're managing things, and then there was, there were some comments and questions that came out from the various boards, that would be interested to see how you would address those as well. So, sort of my thought is that we've sort of had the discussion about the conventional plan. I'd like to see sort of at least an, an initial discussion about the flexible open, open space plan, and the benefits of that.
Well, and to, again, reiterate Ann's comments, the sticking point for me about approving the sixteen, is that looking at the flexible open space, there's no question that it's better, in my mind, but the sixteen on this particular proposal, I would not approve, because I do not like those lot, those three lots behind. That, that extremely bothers me, and other developments that have happened in Situate, I find it horrendous, is the right word? Horrible? A travesty? I'll go on and on. So-
Well, is it three or two?
But, but at least it's not apoplectic.
So, again, if, if you can show me that there's six, that you can fit sixteen-
Nicely, very nicely.
-in a reasonable manner, where there's not lots behind other lots, then I would more likely approve.
In case there, and, and just point the fact that, Richard, I only see two that are behind.
Well, you're right, you're right, because the other one's on the cul-de-sac. You are correct. So there's only two. And there's two in front, and there's two behind.
Yeah, but the, if I could just speak to that. The only thing I said, Richard, if only the conventional density sketch, the bylaw says that's the maximum size. And so, you, you, you're not hamstringing yourself to make decisions once you review the flexible criteria. But as a fact of practical matter, unless you vote that, we can't redesign, we can't do anything.
Well-
You can't.
Uh-uh, you can't.
And I've never been involved in vote with more than several flexible open spaces. This is, this is the, this is the first vote you need before you can get into the nitty gritty, if your consulting engineers are asking us to look at something different, to move stuff around, or whatever, is what I'm saying, is you've, the, the boards voiced the issue which, which you've had, and I've heard that from a couple of people, which we have to look at, but how can we do engineering or look at what the alternative is unless we've already voted the conventional density sketch? You can't. You can't effectively do it.
Well, I would like to, my suggestion here is that we hold off the decision on the conventional plan until we get at least an overview of the whole layout for the flexible open space, and understand what the benefits of that plan are, notwithstanding, you know, the design is not something that we're completely happy with. And sort of leave that for at least a decision where we have the benefit of sort of knowledge on both sides. That's kind of where I'm going.
You can look at that.
Me too.
Well, I think the, the applicant has to sort of take that leap of faith, to some degree, that we would be looking at that, how to say, in a, in a logical way, between the, the density and what can be done.
I, I don't see any-
They've already taken the leap of faith, because they've designed everything.
No, I, I've, I've already-
What I'm really talking about is, we'd like you to sort of walk through the, the design elements of what you've done, understand the stormwater a little bit, understand the other elements of what's going on here, and any of the comments that have been made by the various departments in town, and whether they have any significant impact on what you've already laid out.
But the bylaw says, unequivocally, we have much, much more than a preliminary plan. It says that you're not, it's the maximum number. It doesn't in any way affect your review of these other things. And I don't understand how the criterion, the conditions of a flexible open space have any impact on what you vote for a conventional density count. As a matter of fact, I'd argue, I'd argue that it goes in the opposite direction from there. We've demonstrated under the bylaw what the conventional density count is. When you vote the conventional density count, if then, in the review of this, if you feel there's less lots, you, you have, you can vote less lots. That's fine. But we can't effectively, we can't effectively redesign or do anything until we have the first criteria. And I have to say, if I've been involved in eight to ten of these, I've never, ever followed this procedure previously.
That's what I was asking about before. I was just asking the procedure, let's just say we did approve the sixteen, could we go back with the flexible open space and say, no, based on our, the, the special permit, we only think that fourteen or fifteen is reasonable? Or are you going to hold us and say, no, you approved sixteen? That's where I think we're going to get to.
That's not what the bylaw says. It says maximum.
Okay.
Says maximum, it's very clear.
Go ahead.
Just to raise a, a related point, I think you were here when we did White Ash Farm.
Yes.
And with that one, you approved the three lots, and then, I think it kind of hurt a little bit, because I think there were, there was definitely discussion of going back and just wanting to have the two lots, but the applicant raised and really made a point that the three lots had been approved, and they, they pushed you not to go back and change. So I think that's what you should expect, if you approve, I mean, I'm not-
Right.
I certainly don't have a deal, but that is what happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
As a precedent.
I remember that conversation.
Nice to be all flexible, you know, flexible about the flexible plan.
What do you think?
Well, and Billy, you had said that there, there was a precedent, and I don't remember, where we, for instance, there was a flexible open space where we didn't approve the density until we looked at both. Do you remember which one that was?
No.
I think it took us a while to get to White Ash Farm, right? We didn't approve, we looked at both plants.
It definitely wasn't the first night.
Right.
Was Evangeline Drive, that wasn't flexible open space, right? That was conventional?
Flexible.
That was about flexible?
I think we had the same arrangement up at one off Clapp Road there.
Studley Farm.
Studley Farm, yeah.
It must have been the first night.
Right. I, it doesn't sound like anybody else is interested in the town council's or gen, town council's opinion on the conventional plan, but I would be interested.
Yeah, I, I would agree as well.
I would like to get his opinion on, on the, notwithstanding what, what the words say, there's been a lot of bylaws that say things that people have interpreted through the courts in, in other ways, so I would like to get that input from town council.
That seems reasonable. I mean, I certainly am not a lawyer, so words confuse me.
So the zoning enforcement officer, his, his statement isn't, isn't sufficient for you?
Well, his statement isn't definitive, right? It leaves open the, the possibility that-
Well, there isn't definitive, but this is six months, this is six months ago, I was very, very clear and concise as to what I'd get, and whether, and whether it was sufficient. And this is actually much, much stronger than what we got. So, in the absence, i- i- if that, if that is the position, then what is it? We just do nothing?
No, I would suggest we move into discussion on what you've already proposed here for the flexible open space plan. There's a lot of, a lot of issues here, right? A lot of, a lot of information that's been presented. I would suggest we move on to that.
No, but, but I, I guess, I guess the other issue is, if this isn't this, then at some juncture, we make a decision whether we're just gonna, whether we're gonna do a conventional.
Yeah. Yeah, that's your-
Yeah, and then shame, shame on us.
It's certainly your prerogative, but if, if you feel like that juncture's right now, I would say, I would believe you're a little early. But that's just my opinion.
I sense a tremendous amount of frustration on both sides at the table. And is it going to hurt to continue this to the next meeting, and then, can we-
We don't have any option anyway, we're running out of time.
I know we have. And then, you know, before you make a decision about whether you will go with a conventional, you know, give us an opportunity to see how this flexible is going to work. You've told us how you could do the conventional, and I fully understand that, whether I agree or not with lots behind lots. But you have shown that you can do this. The letter from Bob Vogel is subject to interpretation, but I think that, I think we can go forward with this, Bill. If, if you can be patient, I think at some point, we will be able to figure it out. We just need to, now you need to show us what you, you know, your detention basins, your flow, everything.
Well, let me ask you a question. So, I, I take it the board is referring this to town council on that, on that issue?
On the, just the issue of, of the-
On the zoning enforcement's letter, whether he, whether he's-
No.
Whether he's accurate or not?
No, I, I'm not referring the zoning enforcement letter to him. The question to town council is whether the conventional plan, as presented, is something that we can make a decision on, given our, given our authority to make a decision. And it really comes down to the reading of the zoning bylaw.
Can you play it, because I do not understand what you're asking town council, I'd like to understand that.
You've presented a conventional plan, sixteen lots-
Correct.
Four of which need a special permit for-
Correct.
-in order to be approved.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we're asking the town council, this is what's been presented. Can we make, as the, a planning board, can we make the, the leap, even with the, the letter from the building inspector, right? Can we make the leap that this is an acceptable conventional plan with sixteen lots?
Okay, and town council response at, in the next meeting, you're in a position to vote the conventional density sketch?
I think that's where we could be, yeah.
Well, I'd like to know if, if that is where we're going to be. If, if, assuming town council-
Depends on the response to town council?
Oh, no, I'm seeing, I'm seeing it's an adequate response, obviously.
I'd be prepared to discuss that as, as an initial issue, once we've gotten that feedback.
I, I would, I mean, if it's possible, I'd just like to see a theoretical, like, you know, stormwater, I just want to know what land in, under a conventional plan potentially would be precluded for stormwater structures, or, you know, other parts of the, you know, other things that would go into the subdivision, because that, I, it's hard for me to evaluate density if I don't see those things. And I, I understand there's, you know, certain requirements in the bylaw, but one of the things also says, any other information necessary for the board's determination under, under plan, four point two two, number eighteen, in the subdivision control act.
What page is that on?
It's a Situate, Situate subdivision.
Yeah, but that's not what the conventional density language in the bylaws is in the five fifty point three.
Yeah. What you need to look at is five fifty point four.
Well, I, even under five fifty point three, it's saying the condens, the conventional density sketch plan shall be prepared, and then it says, preliminary with storm drainage. So I guess the thing is, what is preliminary storm drainage?
Where does it say that, Richard, under five fifty point three paragraph two? I don't see that.
Paragraph three.
Yeah, it's pretty clear there.
The conventional density sketch plan shall be prepared by the applicant's engineer, and shall have all the drawing specifications for a preliminary plan, as described in section four dot two, subsection A through S, so the-
Yeah, yeah, Paul, Paul sketch something on there, that's what you want. Yeah, he already told you verbally.
That's in the subdivision rules and rights?
It's no, it's no-
Why don't you look at the subdivision rules and rights?
No, that's, that's in the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, and then in parentheses, it has storm drainage, road profiles, and area photographs. So storm drainage, I'm assuming, is kind of a preliminary sketch plan of what the storm drainage is going to be.
What section, what page do you want?
Sixty-six.
Oh, sixty-eight, third paragraph.
I have six last.
If, if you just notice, it says it's-
Hey, you have a different version than me?
It says it's the degree of, of a preliminary plan excluding storm drainage.
Let's have a new version.
Excluding road profiles.
Excluding subsections.
Says excluding.
Oh, wait, maybe I have an older one. Last sentence.
It says drainage improvement shall be scheduled.
Yeah, it specifically excludes it. Paul'll sketch on what he agreed to before, but if you're going to design for a conventional plan, the drainage on it, then you've-
Okay.
You've, you've obviated the need to do a flexible.
I can stretch on those lots, put in twenty minutes and show you what I do. I, I throw a block for a house with infiltrators for roof leaders, maybe small basin, or rain gardens, swales, whatever, but-
And for, and for the impervious of the roadway as well.
It's not going to be a stormwater design, it's just the best guess scenario of what you do.
But you can put it on the plan. Okay. Well, I note that we're at eight thirty here, so it sounds like that's something you can do.
He can do anything.
Steve.
He will do.
Steve, is the board going to town council on that issue?
Yes.
All right. What I'd like to put in for the record is that since the early eighties, I've been doing fifty-foot lots on my own, and I've probably done sixty or seventy, and, and everyone's been approved, hands down.
So, no, so will, will you confer with town council?
Okay, but in fairness to the town council, or is the town council, being there, about be made aware of the percentage of approvals on the, that the zoning board has approved these?
I'm going to leave that up to town council as to what they need, so.
Yeah. Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask you? I'd like to see the letter that goes to town council, because obviously, the answer's always couched in the question. I just want to make sure that the question reflects what the board's asking.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. Sometimes we just be talking like, um, messy, it's too pretty simple letter.
A quick yes is always good.
A quick what?
Quick yes is always good.
That's true.
So if we write a letter, we'll share a copy with you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Somebody else in the back, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My name's Raymond Losk, I live on Townsend Road. Has, has there been any groundwater studies been done on that property behind there? Because there's a lot of underground water in that area, and that's why we all have wet basins. And, you know, the water table there, I've always joked that my house was a really stupid place to put a house. And on the original plan, Townsend Road was the outer ring of houses that were going to go all the way down to the ocean. So I'm not terribly excited about a house behind my house adding more water to my house.
I don't know the answer to that, but that will be something on our list of things to get an answer.
We'll find that out. Do you want to motion to continue this?
I want to just follow with one other thing, and then- I wanna just follow with one other thing, and then you'll provide the sketch on the conventional plan with the stormwater. Okay. Yes. We need a motion to continue, assuming the applicant would like us to continue.
Well, and I just wanted to make a comment that, in my opinion, you know, there's no question about, as we said before, the preliminary, when you came in here in the winter, that the flexible open space is a better plan than the conventional by far. There's no question in my mind. It's just getting to the right mix or layout, I guess, in my opinion, of what that is gonna be.
All of which we will get to in due time.
Right. And you end up with the challenge of the conventional plan at sixteen. If we get to a place where we think fourteen's the right number for the flexible, does that change your decision?
Yes. And it's, it'd be deeply disappointing after having spent all this money in six months. We would've been ready six months.
So let's get the answer from town council.
Quick question. There was a little bit of discussion, a little bit thought about the fact that there are several items that were not in the application, as far as I know, that were supposed to be, which are mostly documents. There's supposed to be view sheds, a landscape plan with walkways, like has estrangement, a draftee to transfer the open space, a draft deed destruction, providing subdivision minimum lot. Those are things that, in the bylaws, says that you're all supposed to get. Do you, do you want those in the motion, or do you want just a plain motion without those? We gotta vote.
Well, is the applicant aware of what's missing?
Yeah, I would, but just to speak, just all due respect, the bylaw is extremely poorly written, because if anyone can tell me how you can draft a deed dealing with your, your open space before the board has told you what the open space is, tell me how you do that. You can't. It's an impossibility.
Catch twenty-two.
I think you just make it to a time.
You just leave blanks. That's a trick. I think, so you're aware of the missing elements?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, that's just like, for instance, we're gonna...
That will be part of what we need.
Yeah, like, for instance, we're always, we're gonna have a homeowners agreement with O and M plan and all that kind of stuff, but until the board tells us what you want, it's just, you know, I can draft documents that are full of blanks. If you feel like reviewing multiple documents, I can do that.
As long as they're aware of what they need. If we don't have it, we can't make decisions, so they'll know that.
We've got one more hand up.
Yes, last, last word.
I just have a question for clarification. So if conventional plan, after Paul makes the changes to it, gets approved, and then they wanna do the flexible plan, and whoever it is that decides this decides that they only, they see fit to do fourteen, then these guys, having been approved for sixteen, can then go back and say, well, we're gonna do the conventional plan instead because...
Well, they'll have to engineer the conventional plan to the nth degree as they've done with the flexible plan.
But they can go back and do the same. Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
They'll have to file it again.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space special permit for Curtis Estates at Ninety and Vinyl Road, a flexible open space definitive subdivision until September twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, at seven p.m., and to continue the time for action following with the town clerk until November third, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I won't be here September twenty-eighth.
You what?
I will not be here September twenty-eighth.
We'll have, we'll have it on.
Hold on, because we have a special permit yet. What about...
They wanna make sure that they've got a full...
What about prior to September twenty-eighth? And I don't care if that's an abbreviated meeting for...
Actually, unfortunately, both meetings in September I'm gonna have to miss because I'm gonna be traveling for business. I mentioned that, Karen, I think I wrote it on your thing too.
And why was the seventh out, Karen?
What do we have on the calendar for twenty-eighth?
Nothing, nothing. We had figured that.
So could we move the twenty-eighth to the twenty-first?
We also do have...
Are you here on the twenty-first?
I am, yes, of September.
Is everybody here correct?
I think. I have to double check my calendar.
Well, let's, for the moment, let's leave it as it is till we can figure out schedule.
And by that time, we will have an alternate, and I can still miss one and still vote by the Mullen Rule.
Hey, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Still a discussion. Hey, is the board still convened?
Right.
Oh, when it started, okay.
So you either need to have, you could do the Mullen Rule once, and then...
Correct.
Then it's, you can't miss anymore.
Correct.
No, but what I'm saying is we're gonna bend to the conventional density sketch. I want the, I want the full beard here. If you could meet on the twenty-first, and I don't care if it's an abbreviated meeting, if it's not the ample time, you know, the lot of time you gave us today. I understand that you got constraints, but if we get this on the twenty-first, I don't care. We'll go wherever you want. Yeah, I think the twenty-eighth, I'm gonna be out of the country.
Now we're getting down to it.
No, but I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be on pilgrimage, paying for everyone's souls, so...
Were you going to Mr. Gore?
In Fattiman Lord's.
Well, actually, on the twenty-eighth, I'm gonna be in London. That's, I'll be out of the country as well.
I'll meet you.
Exactly.
So let's, you need the twenty-first?
The twenty-first is okay with me.
Twenty-first is fine.
Okay. So let's move the twenty-eighth to the twenty-first, and we'll, we'll just, we won't have a meeting on twenty-eighth. Okay. We need to vote for a new motion here.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space special permit for Curtis Estates at Ninety and Vinyl Road, a flexible open space definitive subdivision plan until November twenty-one.
No, September.
September twenty-one, with a place to be determined and time for action until, with the town clerk, until November third. Sorry.
Let's look at it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Bring back some leads, Bill. Rose, repeat.
Run it by town council, see if we can use it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry again for being late. We're gonna have a long time tonight. Okay, moving on. Public hearing, major site plan administrative review for restaurant and bar at seven to nine Marshfield Avenue. Who do we have to back?
We have Bill. She's gonna be in the audience, I think. Laura, do you want that motion?
Oh, my God. I had a...
Oh, come on, they slammed it, right? Went on the way up?
Okay. Looks like it. You ready, Laura? We did. I don't think we changed all of those seven, unless we changed one.
No, just the one. Just this one. Just this one.
And the next one, too. Seven.
Yeah. Twenty-fourth, that's right. Yeah. I just had trouble getting here. It's my fault. Actually, the MBTA's fault.
Yeah, I got the alert. There's trouble in the rain bush lawn.
Exactly.
So he's, he's being...
Okay, we've delayed too long. Gentlemen, can you introduce yourself, and then we'll jump in here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Aieta, J-O-N-A-I-E-T-A. I'm a law firm of Cassus and Kair, eighteen Russell Park in Quincy. With me is Stephen Lehman, the applicant, and the tenant, and also in attendance is Richard Rick Grady of Grady Consulting.
Okay, well, we'll turn the floor over to you and give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish here.
The property is seven to nine Marshfield Avenue, here on a major site plan administration review, to section seven seventy point three. As I stated, the applicant, Stephen Lehman. Mr. Lehman has been a tenant at this location for approximately five years. He, quickly background-wise, the property consists of seventeen thousand square feet.
Twelve thousand.
The land properties. Yep, that's okay. It consists of a two-story warehouse. It was purchased in two thousand and four by the current owners. And as I stated before, Mr. Lehman has been in there for approximately five years, operating Nautical Mile Market, which is a BTLC food company. He operates the first floor exclusively and has rights to the first floor under a use agreement, which is six thousand square feet. What he's looking to do is carve out a portion of that six thousand square feet, approximately one thousand square feet, to operate a restaurant and bar. The second floor is also six thousand square feet warehouse space, and both locations collectively, as the warehouse, have been as such since nineteen eighty-eight, and even prior to that, with the prior building. The upstairs has not been in use for any period of time that Mr. Lehman has been there, and it's also, according to the land, that has actually not been in use or operation since, I believe, two thousand and four, when the current owner took over. It's a prefab metal-sided building. Again, the entire building is twelve thousand square feet, six thousand each floor, located in the general business district. And the use, again, that we're seeking is a restaurant and bar with twenty-eight seats. It's a permitted use as a right. No variance or special permit is required. What's triggering the major site plan administration review is the issue of the parking based on the seating as proposed. Recently in the property, Mr. Lehman undertook sensitive work to get a septic system installed. The calculations were done for that, and based on the size of the septic system, twenty-eight seats were deemed to be appropriate. There'd be twelve seats seating at a bar area and sixteen seats at tables. And again, we're talking about a thousand-square-foot area at the front part, right on Marshfield Avenue, the front fifty-by-twenty layout. And again, there's, no special permit, no variance required. Again, it's a permitted use as a right to operate a restaurant and bar. Just briefly, again, we'll get to parking, which seems to be the crux of the reasons we're here.
Yeah.
But Mr. Lehman had previously, on July twenty-fifth, been in front of the board's selectmen on an application. They did not vote on it. They continued it to the next hearing, which is the twenty-second of this month, but they did look upon it favorably. And I don't think there's going to be any issues or concerns, but again, they have taken that under review and subject to any further review by this board, the planning board, and any other boards and commissions, as they traditionally do. So get, get to the parking. There are twenty-five spots on site. This is a, again, the calculations, I'm not sure if you have some paperwork with numbers of twenty-eight spaces, but I just want to clarify that. I think there might be some miscalculation. Twelve thousand square foot warehouse space, according to the bylaws, for every six hundred square feet of warehouse space, one parking space is required. So by my calculations, twenty spaces were and are required as a warehouse. It's only been zoned and used as a warehouse since its inception in nineteen eighty-eight. The number of spaces required by this use, which is an expansion, there's always been a kitchen actually on site. Mr. Lehman has boiled and steamed lobsters and steamed things like that. So there has been some kitchens, expansion of that kitchen use. But the use as required for a full restaurant and bar, based on the twenty-eight seats, are seven spaces, essentially four seats per, for every one space, or one space for every four seats, rather. So that's seven spaces. So that simple math, you would say it'd be twenty-seven. However, we have to reduce the number of square footage of the warehouse space from twelve thousand square feet to eleven thousand square feet, because you're carving out a thousand-square-foot restaurant. Under those calculations, eleven thousand square feet divided by six hundred is eighteen point three. I assume you round to the nearest whole number at eighteen spaces, plus the additional seven spaces puts you right at twenty-five, which is the spaces as shown on the site plan. The use, again, hasn't been in use for twelve or thirteen years, or as long as the current owner's been there, the six thousand square foot warehouse upstairs. Mr. Lehman, in his use, which is a combined use, if approved, is a warehouse and restaurant, would really only need fifteen spaces. There'd be ten additional spaces that would be, you know, surplus, if you will, based on the current use. The, the things to note here...
You're going to the site plan that has the twenty-five parking spaces?
Yeah, actually, so I've kinda highlighted, I apologize for the smaller prank, but I've highlighted the parking spaces here. The blue is the current floor plan of the warehouse, and the green is the parking spaces, based on Mr. Grady's calculations of the standard parking space being a nine by eighteen space, one hundred and sixty-two square feet. Actually, this one, I didn't highlight these. There are five along the side as well. I failed to highlight. You can certainly do that. So you have six in front, there are five along the building here, there are eight that wrap around, and then there are six on the back lot of the parking.
We have that plan, I guess, huh?
I don't think we do.
It's, it looks like it's the...
Do we have it?
I just highlighted. Yeah, it's actually this plan here.
I just can't see it.
Yeah, it is tough to see, but all the spots are delineated, marked as well. I did try to highlight that.
Oh, okay, okay. There's those, where are these?
I have a highlighter.
And then where's, oh, there were some over here somewhere? The ones along the building. Where are the ones along the building?
Five exist.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Gotcha.
Highlight those spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. You guys have a question? I have a technical, tell us. I mean, if you have, have all those cars parked in there, what's the clear space to get in and out?
Well, you've got the center driveway, if you will, that...
I see cars on either side.
Correct.
Kind of a small aisle in the middle. Is that...
This is all open. What's underneath here, I believe, is the part of the leaching field or some of the septic. The plan was originally, maybe you can help me, Rick, the plan was originally designed for the septic.
Yeah, the existing parking spaces have about twelve feet of aisle between them. Twelve feet. Is that enough for two-way traffic? Two-way traffic at the same time? No.
There's, I mean, you could certainly do exit and entrance, exit on Central and entrance on Marshfield Avenue.
There are also some obstacles in there.
Yeah. Please.
Up here, of course, you've got the trailer, which, you know, I know it's gonna be moved, but the full length of the parking space doesn't quite fit on the property. It's kind of one of these things where the car's gonna have to hang over into the, into the town right way. Then these here, there's a little concrete wall here, which would have to be removed. concrete wall here which would have to be removed. These are on the Hummer Lock Gibbs property, and the owner, who I knew from some zoning work that we did way back when, told me that they kind of have an informal agreement, but if the property were ever sold, you know, somebody needed to... You know, you need an agreement that's really worth something. Then up here, you've got, up to about here, you've got some, you know, ginormous boats that are in here that aren't going anywhere, you know, anytime unless you have like a whole big, you know, moving operation for, you know, I don't know if you need a crane, but they're big boats. So I think the parking's a little, a little sorry. I think it doesn't really exist anywhere like this. So, and these ones are actually kind of older.
So how would you resolve that? It doesn't sound like you have enough parking.
Well, I mean, taking, breaking that down, certainly the boats in the back, I was there today, there are two boats. You could fit cars along there. If they're close to the property line, they may be over a foot or so, and I know Mr. Lehman's talked to the owner. I mean, I think that's, that's very easily resolved in terms of boats can be moved. I mean, they were put there in the first place, they can be moved. They're not, if they're, like I said, if they're on the property line, they're very close. You could certainly put cars in there and certainly, you know, take care of that. The, anything on the side, if there's any distractions, again, there's nothing major that would be in the way. I know Mr. Lehman anticipated the owner next door to be here. No, she's here. Maybe she can address some of the parking along the side there. And Rick, in terms of the twelve feet, that obviously opens up as you get further on the curve, so...
Correct. If you're further towards the north, it does get wider. It's closer to approximately twenty feet in width.
So if you need to stay wholly within the property line, is that, would that be an issue, or what does that reduce that spacing to, do you know?
Something we didn't look at, because we're basing this on the existing parking that we observed on site when we did the survey, if we pull that entirely within the property, it's probably about ten feet in width instead of twelve.
And I would say the, in terms of the front parking, I think it's a de minimis issue in terms of the overhang, if any. Again, these are based on a full size, not by eighteen spots. It doesn't encroach upon the walkway at all. I know Steve's had a full-sized truck down there and still not overhang on the walkway. If needed, certainly something that could just put a sign for compact cars if it became an issue, a safety issue. But there's certainly plenty of room between the back of where a car will park and access to both by walkway and to the street. Essentially, again, we're, we're looking at this from the viewpoint of right now, the only use of this property has been the six thousand square feet on the first floor. There's been no use at all for twelve, thirteen years of the second floor. So, you know, to that end, the use that Mr. Lehman would require is approximately fifteen spots, seven and eight, based on the warehouse and the restaurant spot.
Yeah, but we can't sort of rely that that will be the answer forever unless there's some limitation in use of some kinds.
Well, I think no matter what use the second floor would take, it may be a situation where they likely would have to come in front of a board, whether it's this board or all the boards for that, for whatever use they propose, and that would be an issue at that time. We can't really use what may or may not happen for a property that has been essentially, you know, has, the use has been abandoned if there is any use or it hasn't been used for twelve or thirteen years, the second half. There's also...
Well, we can only prove what it's zoned for, right? So it's...
That's right, but it's...
Certain number of parking spaces for warehousing and certain number of parking spaces for a restaurant. That's what we need to have.
Right.
And they need to be controlled, fully controlled by the owner.
Absolutely.
So, you know, if there's, if there's an easement for parking spaces, that's one thing. If it's an informal agreement, that's not going to work. I guess I'm, I'm looking at that, and I'm having a hard time figuring out the traffic flow here, and I'm worried about people getting hurt in the parking lot.
As I mentioned, I think an easy way to resolve that, and maybe Rick would agree, is an entrance on Marshall Avenue and exit on Central.
Yes, that'd be easy enough to add. Show me how that would work.
Well, I think you're, you know, an entrance would be coming in here, so all cars are facing the same way.
And that's a ten-foot clearance, you said?
Well, twelve is, I think, from here to here. Is that right?
Approximately twelve, in the frontier area, right?
And then it opens up as it gets closer to Central.
Depending how good the parallel parks are, right? I'm sorry, depending on how good the parallel parks are? Somewhat, yes. So that's the plan? It's a one-way?
Well, if it's, if it's a concern of people getting in, I think that makes sense to have the one-way and have all the cars facing one-way as opposed to people jockeying for, you know, position facing each other.
I don't see how you can make it two-way traffic, so...
No, I agree. Yeah.
And so just to clarify, those five space, five parallel spaces there, is that correct?
There are, along the building, yes.
Along the, yeah. Where we're talking about the...
Then there's seven or eight.
So the five?
On, on the opposite side there.
One, two, three, four, five. Oh, okay.
And there's eight on the other side of the aisle.
Yeah.
And this is also, you know, not taking into consideration any of the off, I mean, the on-street parking. This is all, you know, off-street, off-street parking. It's actually the discretion of the board and, you know, take things into consideration, and also the type of business conducted, the hours of operation of some of the other businesses. I mean, I'd be high pressed to see, you know, businesses down there that have parking, know any need for the, some of the additional on-street. Here, as proposed, twenty-five, if you take the warehouse in full, it's full operation, all eleven thousand square feet, plus a one thousand square foot restaurant. Based on my calculations, twenty-five spots, and based on Mr. Grede's calculations, the parking, that, that would be the way, and how it would be managed.
And so it's part of the plan when you do this to clear all of the obstacles out of it?
Oh, absolutely. It's gonna, yeah, I mean, everything will be...
There's demolition plan here somewhere.
I don't think there's obstacles, you know, I was there, I walked the site, obviously things need to be picked up and tidied up, but I don't think there's any obstacles in terms of prohibiting parking on that site. It's, essentially needs to be just essentially regraded and, you know, whether it's stone, rock, whatever, and do a final, final grade.
This is the aisle, right?
This is that, the length here.
So there's a concrete wall or something, small concrete wall in there. Is that all gone?
It's only a foot off the building.
Hmm?
This one? Building.
Picture?
Yeah, that's about, it's about a foot off the building down the end.
Right. Is that being removed? Or is that, because it doesn't show as staying here on the drawing. It shows the parking space going up to the...
Yeah, that's the wide part. It's not being removed.
Does it end before that, Steve, or does it...
It, that goes right, it's just before the garage door there.
It does show existing concrete wall in the drawing, so it has to be removed.
Where does it show it?
Yeah, that was...
That's the...
It's showing this right here, but I'm saying that was...
That's leaching, though, right? Is that above ground? I can't really tell, because this is a septic plan, right?
Right.
No, but to the right, you'll see the words "existing concrete wall."
That was, yeah, it also says "remove," and I think the intention Steve's saying is...
But that's right in the...
It's going to be removed, right?
It's because the spaces are... That's what I thought too, yeah.
But that's not over here.
This?
No, because here's the building in here, right? That's only a couple of feet off of the building.
Well, I think this is a ten scale, so that's, you know, I think that's probably accurate. It is only a couple of feet off the building. But the problem is every foot here is like critical.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five. And then this is that door, this, I guess, a door right here.
So this, I don't know what that is. This might be the wall, but it, you know, the way they've got it broken, it must continue on down. This says edge of pavement.
Well, I guess that's part of the...
Can't decipher it.
That's part of the problem, is we don't really have a plan that shows parking.
Yeah, I think we need a parking plan. That's not overlaid on the septic plan and all that.
Maybe also showing any obstacles.
Yeah.
Well, I think it is identif, yeah.
The driveway and...
I think it's identified here, but the intent, it does say "removed," so I think the intention was it, was to be removed. It's an old loading dock.
Where's that? Where's it say "removed"?
Well, it says "existing leaching concrete wall, remove," and then it says, unless I'm wrong. Is that right, Rick?
Uh, it is the intention for that to be removed.
I just don't...
So that's above grade?
Yeah, it's about a...
Leaching wall is above grade?
About a foot above grade.
That's, that's the one we see in this picture?
That's right.
Okay. What's the other piece of it?
That's been removed.
That was a recessed loading dock at one point that they eliminated as part of the septic system construction, and it was the intention for that entire wall to be removed, so the remaining section would be removed.
Well, it doesn't exist anymore.
They've already removed a portion of it. They haven't removed it in its entirety.
Okay.
So on the plan that's labeled "existing concrete wall," that's not there anymore then, is what I'm hearing?
Partially removed, partially still existing. A portion of it came out for the septic system installation, and they did not remove the entire thing at that time.
What are you going to do to spiff up this building? Because it looks like who did it and left.
There was comments from the design review to interject.
Well, be that as it may, what's the plan?
They were missing elevations.
That's true.
I made it. Going to take what they, what they told us, but a little bit, without having any elevations.
Right, it's just, how do you plan on spiffing this up?
We talked about doing some potted flowers out front to dress it up a little bit, and obviously the front, the clapboard will have to be painted, cleaned up and painted, as well as the steps.
All this rubbish and...
So where's the entrance to this thing?
Right here, behind the van.
Behind, underneath the stairs?
Yeah, the front will be all graded out. Once the trail is moved, it'll grade it all out, put down the stone.
But that's where parking's going, right there, right?
Yep. And then where you have the double door, that's where you're supposedly putting a deck?
Yes, we're proposing that.
Are you going to clean all that demolition and stuff out of there?
Yes, and there's a fence going up, so you won't see anything beyond the, the deck.
A lot of his mechanicals are there, some of the compresses, things like that. That'll all be blocked off.
You know what I think? I think we need more information.
What can I answer for you?
No, it's not a question of answering, it's a question of showing. I need to see what, I need to see the deck. I need to see, you know, the fact that you have removed this, this stone wall, what your signage is going to be, what your elevations are, and how you plan to improve all of this to make it inviting as a restaurant. It, it's just, there's too much undone here, I think.
I think we can testify as to what's going to be done. I think we're, we're here for that. I mean, a deck is a deck, it's...
Uh, it is and it isn't.
I remember one of the comments for the design review was having a stone wall. I guess that was their suggestion. A stone wall similar to the, the brewing, the Untold Brewing. I remember reading that comment.
Yeah, one of the, the woman on the board had mentioned a stone wall or something, yeah.
So I don't know...
They were actually going to take some pictures of, of some walls that they thought had been used successfully around town and sent them over to Mr. Lehman.
Okay.
But I do think, you know, as part of the design review committee review, they recommended we get elevations, and then they had a number of bullet items that they recommended be addressed here, and I assume you were at the meeting?
Yes.
So is that something you're prepared to do? Or did you agree or not agree with some of these changes, or...
No, they threw out some recommendations, you know, to take into consideration.
I think, you know, Steve, as the tenant, will do what he can in his ability as a tenant. He doesn't own the building, so when it comes to changing facades or doing things like that, he's not in a position to start to do that, you know, at this time. It is a warehouse building. He's obviously going to, to spruce it up, make it as nice as it can be. But if, I don't have all the recommendations in front of me, but I think some of it was to actually like change the type of facade and things like that.
And on it on. You said exterior stairs of the second floor detract from the appearance, use the deck as the main entrance?
We can't eliminate the, the main entrance to the second floor there, so I don't know what you can do about those stairs, but...
No, I think what they recommended was use the, use the deck as the main entrance to the restaurant.
Right.
Right, as opposed to...
That was one of their suggestions, yes.
Says enclose the deck to create a vestibule or roof line similar to those of the main building. Add an awning to the deck, use pavers to create pathways, potted plants, they, they agreed with that. You know, lighting, I don't think we've seen anything on lighting yet, and what this is going to look like. Add a wall around the deck similar to that of Untold Brewery. So those were, laundry list, about eight items there that I think they identified, and it seems to me we, I guess I'd like to know if you're going to address those or not.
Well, I mean, I...
I didn't realize this wasn't your building. This is something you're just leasing.
Yeah, I'm leasing, yes.
Short-term lease or a long-term lease, or...
We have, could be lengthy, yeah. We have options and stuff, so. But the, you know, they, they suggested some things that, you know, we'll take into consideration, and, you know, we're mulling around now, and, you know...
Well, I think it would be good if you took those into consideration and came back with a revised plan that shows us how you're going to, what you're going to address and how.
When were you planning on opening this?
Um, once we have a meeting, we go back in front of the selectmen to finalize common dick and alcohol on the twenty-second, and then once we get permission, we continue to build out and hopefully sometime mid-September.
Why do I feel that you're putting the cart before the horse? I mean, if, if this is theoretically a matter of right to put this restaurant in here, wouldn't it behoove you to do some of these improvements and show it to us that this is what you're going to do, before you get your liquor license?
Well, you could argue that's putting the cart in front of the horse as well, because Steve's been running this as a warehouse. It's always Patricia being a warehouse. It's a new endeavor for him, you know, it is as a right. So if he puts these improvements, makes changes, and then now it's, you know, for one reason or another.
I was at the selectmen's meeting, and it appeared to me that they were amenable as long as you've got by the planning board. So, you know, you've got one, the planning board here and the board of selectmen over here. So we need to, you know, there were some people in the neighborhood that are vehemently opposed to this, and there were some people in the neighborhood that think, think this is wonderful. I, it's just, I find that there are a lot of unanswered questions here that we need to see a little bit more, more definitive, if you will.
Yeah, I think with other proposals that have been before us, whether it's an addition to a building or whether it's the, like, let's say use the brewery as an example, they took what the recommendations for the, from the design review committee, and then basically came up with a new plan and a new elevation and said, "This is what we're planning to do," based on that. So it may not, as you said, let's say as an example, you can't relocate the stairs, you know, I understand that, but maybe you would do a...
By the way, the design review committee didn't suggest relocating the stairs. They suggested relocating the entrance.
The entrance, yeah.
But I understand that, those kinds of things. But then other things, for instance, like, you know, the, the, the rock wall or maybe the awning, you know, again, if you could show us in an elevation or say, "We can't do an awning because of this, X, Y, Z," or something.
Yeah, I mean, Steve just met two days ago with them, so this is the, you know, he's only hearing this like forty-eight hours ago.
Right, right.
And so I think the key, or the point here is we're focusing on the larger issues, obviously, if the board has, and not to dismiss these other issues, because this is what people see first. They see the curb appeal, they see the, you know, what is it going to do to my property value and things like that, and that's what you're addressing here, and I understand that. But for Steve, he's just getting this input and feedback within the last couple of days. So we haven't had that chance to put those issues at the forefront. I think the focus that we were going off of, obviously, is to see the board's, you know, concerns or questions regarding parking and the layout. or questions regarding parking and the layout of the, the floor plan, et cetera. Um, so that is, you know, if that's the fault, then that's our fault, because that's our, that's our focus, and it hasn't been on the, uh, the design.
Well, it's a combination of all those things, right? We look at all of it, not just-
Absolutely, right.
Parking by itself. We look at, you know, things like lighting. How's it gonna be lit? Is it lit well enough for people who park in here to see?
Absolutely, right.
What is it, so what is the lighting, right? Um, you know, go one half to the other. How about water? Do you have capacity for, for a restaurant there?
Yeah.
Water capacity?
Yes.
So the DPW is bought off on that?
Yeah.
But is the change in use, right? So I, I'm just saying, is, is the change in use, does it change the water requirements? Does it change the sewer requirements?
That was the point of the septic, I believe. So-
Right.
They, they did the studies, they did the tests, and it came back that a twenty-eight seat, um, sit-down restaurant is within the, the capacity, within the capacity of the septic, right.
Does it have a grease trap and all that kind of stuff that goes with it? That's all been designed? Is that in here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, but we would look at all of it, I guess, so.
Absolutely, right.
The parking still appears to be, um, I guess we need to know whether those eight spots are actually available or not.
Well, we, you wanna have, um, yeah, you wanna have a talk, or?
The, the owners, uh, next door, Chris is here. She can-
Would you like her to speak to?
Chris, maybe you can explain the parking along the fence?
Could you identify yourself, please?
Chris Brown, Eleven Marshfield Avenue, Humming Rock House. Thirty years ago, we, uh, we kind of traded some land on the west side of, of my property, to widen the park, the driveway for the, at that time Lobster Pound, it was still being used for that. And traded it for, um, for an extension on the north side of my property so that my parking lot could accommodate six cars. So that was kind of the, the trade, and, um, so the parking that Steve is referencing goes along the fence that separates, separates our properties. Um, was there-
But it, but is the parking on your property?
It is.
It is?
Partially, yes.
And is there, do you have a, you guys have a written agreement or something that says we'll do this?
No.
Is that something that you-
We could easily do that.
I would encourage you to do that. Um, I mean, it's fine if it's-
It was a great trade-off for us, because-
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not, just, we wanna know that if we approve something, you know, you could, you could decide to get out of the restaurant business tomorrow, and somebody else could take it over, and then you, you might be in, you know, in conflict. So if, if we know that, you know, there's a perpetual easement or whatever it is for that parking, then we can rely on that parking being available. That's all.
That's defined the border for thirty years, so-
Right.
So it's, uh-
But that fence doesn't define your property limit, though, right?
So that would be helpful, just as a kind of add-on to that, like, to, one of the only plan that we really have is the septic plan. And I'm trying to find the property line on it, and I don't see it.
It's rectangular.
I see the, the existing stockade fence.
It's right here, I think, where the, isn't this line right here?
That dark line, is that the property line then?
That's what I, that's how I would interpret it.
It's right here?
Right here. See, it's got the little esch.
Yes.
So that's why that, as the fence starts to move over, these are actually on-
Yeah.
Inside hers.
Here's the property line here, this solid dark line.
This, and this solid dark line here, okay.
Right.
So these, these faces, like, this one, let's say for all, this first one is all on the property, but then as they start to go down the line here, they're into the other property, right?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And then, um, is there a minimum, Laura, maybe you have this answer, but is there a minimum width we should have in there? If we're parking on the sides and it's a one-way street? Is there a sort of a standard?
Generally, a minimum of ten feet for, for a one-way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'd wanna make sure that that was the case here, that it could accommodate parking on both sides and still have adequate space for people to drive through.
Yeah, I mean, I just think in general, like, having a parking plan without all this other stuff, without all the other lines, would be very helpful.
At least you can follow the flow.
Right.
That's what I tried to highlight. That was equally, you know, it's, there's a lot of lines, yeah. So I did try to highlight it, um, and I know it's far further away for you guys to see, but.
Other questions?
Yeah.
I think-
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to put a jigsaw puzzle together here, so I'm not sure that I have all the pieces. In terms of the application, I'm not sure that, at least the plot plan, some of the other things seem to be missing. Coastal Resources indicated she was looking for an estimate of how much money that we're spending in the building, to see whether it triggers additional effort because it's in the floodplain. You seen that note?
I haven't seen it, no.
Did they have comments from all of the, all the comments from the committee?
No, I don't know that he did.
We should make sure that that happens, right?
I don't think my contact was on the original application, um, so if there were anything sent, it would've been sent to, to Mr. Lehman, but I don't think he's seen anything, so. Did you put me on there or not? I don't know.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest that we assemble the pieces that we have and give it to them and let them re-
I did check with the building department after getting the memo from, from Mr. Dervy, and he doesn't think that there's gonna be any issue as far as-
I'm satisfied there isn't, but I mean, it's still, it's still doors, gotta be closed.
Understood.
Also, I'd like- Coastal Resources is indicating there's a fair number of things what we should have on record here that we don't have, I think.
Yeah, she does recommend getting an elevation certificate-
Right.
And photographs of the building, and, you know, some other things like that. Some of the flood information, the, uh, base flood elevation is wrong, and what the plans.
It looks like a current assessment from a professional appraiser is one of those requirements. If you haven't seen this note yet, then we oughta make sure you get copies of all these, 'cause we would need to address all this.
Yeah, and I think even the design review committee as well. I think Steve took notes, but didn't see anything in, you know, in writing. I think he understood that something would be submitted to the board, but-
Right.
Um, we appreciate it to pass that on as well.
Absolutely. We'll get a whole package out to him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, the, the information from the design review is just something that I passed on, because they're still circulating the minutes, and they haven't been recommended. And that was intended as more sort of a smorgasbord than a-
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, so whatever, whatever they produce, I would say let's make sure.
Right.
Well, that's what I was saying, is like, for us, you know, maybe, just as an example, you don't do the awning, but you do something else, but just show us what you were planning to do, based on those recommendations, right?
Do you have a card?
Oh, I have one, that's fine.
And then again, for me, I think just the parking plan, something that's clear would be very extremely helpful.
We'll try to streamline that, and I think we can produce that, right? Just a straight parking plan?
Yes.
Yeah. And in, uh, section seven seventy-five, which is application requirements for site plan review, there's a pretty detailed list of kind of what should be in the site plan, and that should be kind of addressed, and will be helpful to guide kind of how you guys move forward with that revised plan.
And, um, Laura, has the, has the fire department and, and police, have they all seen this? Particularly the fire?
The fire's seen it, uh, the police should really see it, because, uh, there've been issues with other bars and-
Yeah. Particularly this, how tight this man had been in the parking place. Okay. Running out of time here.
I mean, I think I understand where, what the board's looking for at this point, um, and if the, you know, if the board will be open to it, we'd obviously like to come back and ask for a continuance.
Sure. I would suggest just-
It's time to get information, exactly.
Apparently with the planning office, so that, you know, you get everything that, that you need here.
Um, I, I just, just have to defer to Rick in terms of timing and, uh, being able to assemble what we anticipate, what we heard tonight.
Two to three weeks?
Okay. Do you know, when is the next scheduled meeting?
Uh, well, we have, um-
That's a loaded question.
You know it's not the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I just wanted to know.
Uh, so we had planned on the twenty-eighth, but if you wanna charge to move it to the twenty-first.
Well, that's the twenty-first.
It's now become the twenty-first, okay.
That would be earlier.
So did you want, um, tonight we had an hour and a half on Ann final, do you wanna go with an hour and fifteen, maybe, or?
Yeah, that's probably okay. Before we, yeah, I think that's fine. Before we get to that, I think, um, I just wanna see if there's any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, Jeff, can we see the form of releasing here, so we can go on better, I'm trying to see your bureaus. Steve is the owner of the property on the opposite side of Marshfield Avenue, which is the, um, hairdressing place, uh, on the first floor, and there's a residential apartment on the second floor.
Okay.
So, uh, I, a couple days ago, submitted a letter to the, to the board, um, outlining some issues that we see and we'd like to see, and I understand that a revised plan is forthcoming, but I think it makes sense to make sure that, maybe I should run down a bit of a laundry list here of what I see, and, uh, you know, issues that I think are traditional site plan issues that we'd like to see addressed, uh, or if the, see if the board cares that they are addressed. So, um, to give you a little background from a procedural perspective, I was at the design review, uh, committee meeting, uh, with my client. Um, the design review, it was clear to me, and I, and Laura would agree, felt they didn't have enough information at all to make any real recommendations to the, to the board. And they were looking for some, some additional information in order to do that. And I would think that that additional information and that additional review on it takes place before your next hearing. So I don't know when their hearing is next. Um, additionally, uh, I don't wanna speak for Bill. Bill was at the selectman meeting, I was not. But I think Attorney Aida said that, uh, the selectmen were favorably on that, and I think what the selectmen were saying, to Ann's point, was you need to go to planning before we can deal with your liquor license. Um, just to kind of run down the issues. Number one, this site is a gravel site, okay? And so there's no striping at all in this parking lot as it presently exists. These spots are just conceptual on, on a plan, but they don't actually really exist. And I think that it's essential from a safety perspective to make sure that, uh, the board understands what the surface is gonna be, that there's proper striping out there. And I think that there's a possibility that should, uh, impervious surface be required, for instance, you're looking at a conservation jurisdiction issue, um, and just, if you step back from the site, you're gonna see, uh, if, if, I think that the, the zoning board ought to take a look at this, because it appears as if a portion of the site is within the floodplain overlay. And I'd like, I think that that ought to be addressed, because I do think that potentially there's a special permit from that perspective. So that's just stepping back and looking at the permits. On the issues, the plan that you have before you is a site, it is, is a septic plan that was prepared in two thousand and fourteen. It's not stamped, it's not signed, um, it's missing all of the information that you would need in order to make an informed decision from the standpoint of a, um, a site plan. And it appears as if this application is incomplete, and that's obviously what you're discussing, but I think that the plan needs to show, um, the actual parking analysis on a piece of paper, because as Attorney Aida was reading it, um, I wasn't quite following. And all of that, of course, is dependent upon whether you could properly utilize spaces on a different property within the town layout and so forth. I think that there's, um, I think traffic rules and regulations ought to take a look at this from the standpoint, it's a heavy, heavy intersection, um, you have no curving in the area of those five, five or six spaces out front. They all hang out into the street layout, but that's also a sidewalk. And there's a general bylaw on that in the town situated that's illegal. So I think that you need to look at that, because you could lose, you can lose spaces there. The new spaces, uh, on the adjacent property, I understand that there was a land swap, so to speak, but there's no documentation, it doesn't run with the land, there is no ability for adverse possession here because it's land court property, so there's a lot of land issues. And any parking trade here, or any land trade that results in parking ought to be pertinent to the property, properly reported in the land court before the planning board signs off. I definitely would wanna make certain that the, uh, that the concrete wall is removed and these impediments are removed. Fire chief, as I'm looking at this, you see, uh, parallel spaces on both sides and a very small amount of travel. Fire suppression in, in the, in, in Hummerock is a big deal. Uh, I represented Alice's house, which is one of the houses that burned years ago out there, and that's not where the fire originated. There's a lot of wind and so forth. It's, I think, essential that the fire chief take a close look and get some written recommendations on this issue, and their ability to suppress fire effectively so that it doesn't spread to neighboring parcels. And on the issue of fire, you have a deck that's proposed. Apparently, the deck has no seating on it, and, um, but yet it's still described in the, the description of the liquor license premises as an area where people would be drinking. And, um, I'd like the planning board to take a look on, you know, whether that deck is, is something that ought to be used or should be used or can be used, um, even from a safety perspective, from, for the purposes of alcohol consumption. What Mr. Lehman indicated at the design review committee was, uh, that it would only be used basically for people to go out, step outside in the smoke. The problem with that is this deck goes about to exactly the property line. In the, in the letter I gave to the board, there's a Google Earth photo that you'll see that shows the neighboring properties, and you have boats, uh, in the off-season lined up on every inch of that neighboring parcel, literally within a couple of feet of where the edge of this deck would be. And should somebody, uh, throw a cigarette onto, you know, boats that are wrapped with combustible materials or so forth, you can have a real issue. So I think that there's a safety issue, and from a planning perspective, that's exactly what I think the planning board ought to be looking at.
This one here?
You see?
Yep.
Additionally, I think your bylaw has an area where they require the vegetative buffering around the parking areas, and I don't see that that's gonna address at all. And it can't be addressed because this is too slim of a property or so forth. We oughta know that, because maybe this property isn't, isn't appropriate for this proposed use. Um, I think the photomechanic plan ought to be shown. I think we need to see where the outdoor, um, you know, air conditioners and vents and so forth, things that create noise and odor and everything. If I support a look at hours of operation, all of this is in my letter. There's a lot there. But it first starts with complete and comprehensive application that I can sit down, take a look at, and then I'd probably come back to the board and probably articulate what I see, you know, there. So, let me just see if I, oh, dumpster location, um, and recycling. There appears to be no provision on this site for any of that, um, no loading or unloading area. So, we, we have, we have a lot of issues here. Um, I think, also, I think Attorney Aida probably misspoke. I think he said it was twenty-eight seats. I think your plan shows it as being twenty-nine seats. I think your plan shows it as being twenty nine seats for what it's worth, the floor plan. Um, it's inconsistent with that, but I'd like to see cleaned up so that I can properly evaluate this from the site plan perspective and bring my comments to you as best I can. On the Title V issue, um, I think we need Jennifer's input because if you look on the plan, number one, the plan shows that, that the flow is based on fast food restaurant. And this is, this would be a full service restaurant. And so I think that title flow is potentially to be affected. I'm not sure how. There's an implication there. Um, the plan that you have in front of you also shows the uses that purportedly were existing in two thousand twelve, I think it was, or fourteen, when the plan was approved. And it shows office use in addition to warehouse use. But we had a representative, representation this evening that the only real use of the property is warehouse and a few steam and a blaster. So we need to look at that because that's why the parking analysis, which drives this entire site. So, um, I just take a quick peek. I, I think I've kind of given a nice overview of my letter. I'd like the board to take a look at it and request the appropriate input and appropriate boards. I think traffic rules and regulations is key here. So, um, that, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
Hey, good evening everyone. My name is Stacy Clark and I live at ten Marshfield Ave, right across the street from this proposed project. And I wanted to share with you that in my career as an environmental scientist, I've had the opportunity to tour and evaluate risk at over a hundred and fifty commercial and industrial sites all across Massachusetts. And my concern here is the proposal of a deck, uh, specifically for the use of alcohol consumption, and as far as I understand, smoking as well, uh, immediately adjacent to a commercial boatyard where combustible materials, plastics and fuels are used routinely stored and transported. Uh, that to me is a, is a hazard and a risk. So I'd like to go on record tonight and simply say that I think that this project poses, uh, a seriously dangerous, um, concern for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Any comments for the board?
This needs to be continued, and I think that, um, Mr. Lehman has a laundry list of things that he needs to come up with before we can proceed.
I would agree. And I want to make sure that we get all comment letters. So he's got, and he's got the complete set. And, um, hopefully, uh, thanks for the, the summary of your comment letter over there, too. So I think it, it hits a lot of, you know, the key issues that we would have to address, so.
Yeah, 'cause I think even on the, the letter here, it talks about lighting, too, and that was something you've mentioned.
Right.
Steve.
The other thing on the staff is getting accessibility. And then some pedestrians on site who may have folks. Commission on disabilities and.
Okay. Um, well, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
We got that. I just, um, wanted to ask if the board agree with all of the boards that, um, Mr. Delisi mentioned. Uh, I think there are a lot in his letter. There were others that maybe were not, but, um, traffic rules, uh, ZBA, commission on disabilities, um, let's see, um, I mean, there were, you know, I can go back and look at the YouTube, but there were a large number of them that I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing what you want.
Yeah, I, well, we need to reach, reach out to the departments who might have some input on this. Uh, to the extent that, that you think they do, then we should reach out to them. I mean, Board of Health, we should obviously be on that list.
We, we did get comments from the Board of Health. I mean, one of the things that, that they mentioned is that the septic system is only designed for twenty eight seats.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And there are twenty nine seats on this plan.
That's correct.
Yeah, there was one extra that the architect drew in.
And so right, oh, right now, just to, to clarify, Laura, we have not received any comments from the police department or the commission on disabilities. Or was there comments from fire? There was, wasn't there? So we do have some of these things, right?
Some of those we did.
Yeah, I also think traffic rules and regulations is important just because those spaces theoretically, if we do approve them, they're backing out into Marshfield Avenue.
Well, just parallel parking in there with two lines of cars could be a challenge.
But yeah, even beyond that, I guess you're, you're backing out into traffic to get out of those spaces.
Yeah, in the front.
In the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see anything from, um, from fire.
Okay.
Let's see, um.
Okay, so I would agree with all those that were mentioned.
Typically, also, the way we handle the correspondence is we give copies to you. We generally do give copies to the applicant of everything that comes in. We, if we're requested, we share with, um, anyone who asks for it.
Sure. But there's a file in the planning office anybody can come in and look at on the comments?
Yeah, um, it came up recently with, um, with Toll Brothers that, um, you know, there were some questions about who sees what. Um, but we can talk about this. Anyway, I have, let's see, um, let's see, um, I tried to add some of the stuff that was talked about.
Okay. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the major site plan administrative review for seven to nine Marshall Avenue until September twenty first, twenty seventeen, at eight P. M. at a place to be determined.
Eight fifteen.
At eight fifteen, for a place to be determined. And, um, for, at, time for action for filing with the town clerk until October thirty first, twenty seventeen, and to request that the applicant schedule a second meeting with the design review committee prior to that meeting and provide four elevations as required by Situate zoning bylaw seven fifty point four, seven days prior to that meeting, and a plan showing detail of the deck, uh, parking plan, including obstacles that will be removed, and the dimensions of parking spaces and driveways, signage, lighting, and proposed improvements from those recommended by the design review committee.
I second. Oh, it's a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the fun begins. To the press line.
I think, okay, we're going to take five minutes here for the team test.
Okay, we're running late, sorry for that. This is the continued public hearing for the accessory dwelling, special permit, two-seater lane. And I see we have Mr. Morse and...
Karen Lynch, two-seater Crest Lane.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Sure. As you just stated, this is the continued hearing for proposed accessory dwelling of Ms. Lynch's property, two-seater Crest Lane. We presented the plans to you at the last meeting and you tasked us essentially with three things. One of them was to develop a landscaping plan. We submitted a landscaping plan to you that depicted the planting hydrangeas, holly, eunomus?
Ewanumus.
Ewanumus.
And ornamental grasses around the accessory dwelling. Secondly, you wanted us to relook at the architecturals for the property and pull the two garage doors a little bit closer together and make them a little more symmetric with the windows above it. We've done that, submitted revised architecturals showing those details. And thirdly, was a revision to the site plan itself. Where we pulled the garage doors in closer together, we were able to narrow the driveway by approximately two feet, reducing the pervious surface that much more on the site. Those were the three tasks at hand. We submitted the revisions as requested. I can go to the board and show you specific things on the plan if you'd like.
Would you do that? Would you just... Do we have plans showing the change in the driveway width?
Yep.
Yeah, and just as a point of certification, the landscape plan elevations don't match the new proposals?
Correct. So the architectural plans were the first things to get updated. The architectural plans brought the two garage doors in to narrow up the pillar in the middle and centered it on the three windows above it. Okay? While the architect was drawing that plan, the landscape architect was preparing the landscape plan, which does show the wider garage doors, but it depicts what we're proposing. We're proposing on the two sides and then behind, at the rear, the plantings on the sides that you would see. And then the site plan, which depicts the reduced width driveway here, showing the driveway scales off two feet less in width. And we also, I forgot to mention, we added that walkway to the side entry door there. That was drawn at the last meeting.
So the driveway is... There's a fair amount of distance on either side of the driveway edges? But you weren't able to put any plantings in it?
No, that's existing lawn surface right now next to the driveway. If we go back, there's lawn surface next to the driveway. The plantings are up next to the front of the building, on this side, on the side of the walkway over here, and then in the back of the building.
Wasn't there also an issue of like the septic was there, so you couldn't do certain things?
So the septic is going in in this location here, off the side of your driveway. I took a picture of the site today. This depicts the location where the accessory dwelling is located. You'll see that the actual location of the accessory dwelling is all currently lawn surface. There'll be more plantings there when this project is done than what currently exists today as a result of the accessory building.
But then, in that picture that you just showed, to the left, those plantings, part of them would be removed because of the septic?
Some of them are going to be removed because of the septic. Yeah, correct.
Offhand, what the height of the existing dwelling is?
Existing building?
Existing house.
It's a one-story house. I don't have an elevation on it.
I think the elevation you gave us for the garage in the apartment is 23 feet?
That's what I have. And that's correct.
I was just curious as to how the roof lines match up?
Roof lines are going to be pretty close. The roof line on the accessory dwelling will probably be a foot to two feet higher than the house.
Is that right? It would seem the house roof line would still be higher, but maybe that's just an optical illusion.
Intuitively, it looks so it should be higher.
Yeah.
What, the house?
Because it's at the top of the hill.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's a walkout from the second level of the...
Right, so it's a one-story walkout.
It's a one-story walkout. It's a one-story house.
Right, so it'll... It's going to have sort of the same level, right?
Exactly. It's going to be very close.
Okay. So were you... Did you consider the stuff that's getting removed on the... Looking at the garage on the left side there, is there... Are there plantings that are going back there at all?
No, that's where the new septic system would be going. We'd be planting it with grass over there.
It's the old one.
What's that?
It's the old vision. With... Right, the new one, except for plantings, but the new one looks like...
There's a new landscape plan?
No, no, no.
Well, they're not really on the plan.
It's this.
Yeah, yeah, no, I have that.
All right.
I've got that right here. I'm just trying to figure out if, because we're taking out some of that, you know, sort of cover, particularly for the people across the street, whether there isn't, you know, something that could go back. I guess not, right?
No. I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is that the zoning board of appeals did give them their section six finding, and so they can build this garage as a matter of right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can.
They can't build the accessory dwelling.
This is also true. However, I think that they have more than adequately given us plantings and a plan, and they have... The three things that we asked of them last time have been done.
Yep.
So, I mean, we can't... I think it looks... It's going to fit into the hill. It's over, not quite to the fence, and it's... I don't have a problem with it, Steve. I really don't.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a problem. I have no problem.
Yeah, I think the elevations look a lot better with it being centered. I like that they've narrowed the driveway a bit. Still, I wish that there was some mitigation for the plantings that are going to be removed for the septic system, but maybe that just can't be done.
Can't be done.
Yeah, so...
Let it go.
Let it go.
Let it go.
I think the elevations are nice. I do have a question since the applicant is here. Is it going to be like a Murphy bed or like, there's no bedroom? That was what came up last time. It's not in our...
Right, it's going to be one open room, and then after it's built, I'll have an idea of the space, and then if I wanted to... I've looked at Murphy beds, and, you know, that's an option.
Okay, because we were just concerned it was like just one big space without any delineation of a bedroom, basically.
Right.
So you're planning to do that after the fact?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just having a hard time kind of visually, you know, how big it's going to be. So after I get in there, I'll know whether I want to, you know, it's a matter of snapping a line and putting up a wall if I wanted to.
Marty, do you have any comments?
No, the only thing that occurs to me, and I think it's a little bit late in the process, and the board seems to be okay with this the way it is, maybe the whole garage could be scooched back a little bit, and then you'd have the room for plantings because you'd be back behind the septic. You'd have more room between the garage and the septic system, but, yeah.
Well, the septic system's to the left of the garage.
To the left. It's not...
They're taking out the...
I'm looking at this plan here. That's... I'm not looking at the right plan.
There's tanks and leaching field to the left of the driveway. The end of the leaching field goes under the driveway.
It's a foot in from the building envelope, right?
I was talking about the depth of, you know, moving the whole house back away from the street further.
But then it would be more than set into the hill.
Which would result in a steeper driveway as you go up the hill. And you don't want to do that, no.
Just mentioning it.
Okay. Any other comments on the board?
I just had a, like, an engineering question for Greg. This relates to the stormwater bylaw. If there wasn't going to be the roof infiltrator and the pervious driveway, would this project be triggering the stormwater bylaw?
No.
No, it would not?
This project is under the stormwater bylaw thresholds.
Okay. It's still underneath even without those?
It's, um... Well, the fact that the driveway is a pervious driveway...
Right, that was my... That was my... I guess that was my question.
Is what gets us underneath, correct. Yep.
So I guess the only thing I would be interested in maybe potential condition is that we make sure that the pervious driveway is, in fact, constructed and maintained. Otherwise, you would have had to go through the stormwater permit process, if that... I'm making sense.
Well, we just want it to function the way it's designed.
Right, right.
Has to be maintained. Okay. Any public comments?
Yes?
I know, we were... Christine Harris. I live across the street, and we were here the last time and raised some concerns, and we've just tried to address a little bit further, I think, some of the things that we're concerned about. One is the non-conforming lot, and I realize this is not necessarily in the purview of the planning board. However, it is an existing non-conforming structure on a lot that is less than 20,000 square feet. And by putting a second dwelling on that property, it does increase the non-conformity, because we live in an R2 district, and... Which requires 20,000 square feet for one dwelling. If we were in R3 district and it only required 10,000 square feet, it would still be beyond what the requirements are. So it does increase the non-conformity of that property. And unfortunately, we were not able to go to the zoning board meeting and argue and pay attention because we were away during the time that that was happening. So... And the planning board had cited the Gale versus Gloucester case as part of their decision. But that case, in fact, is about a reconstruction of an existing dwelling. It did not involve the construction of an accessory dwelling. We want to reiterate our stormwater concerns. We do think that having this accessory dwelling is going to exacerbate problems that have run off in flooding that we already have in the neighborhood. And there's going to be greater impermeable surface, and I know that you have made some... Some measures to try to solve that problem, but we didn't get plans for stormwater design. Last time I did see, once you put in the... They put in the new landscaping plan, it did have the picture of the dry wells and where they were going to put them, next to the storm drains. But they also didn't include the walkways, which you did include. There's no storm drains on Torrey's Lane, so any water that's going to be generated from that is going to come flowing right down across Torrey's Lane and towards our property. So we have a lot of concerns about runoff and flooding. We've had water in our basement. There have been a history of flooding and rising up of the groundwater in that neighborhood, and so we have concerns about that. Especially since there are going to be even more trees removed from the property in order to make way for the new septic system. And we did ask for there to be some consideration of plantings or trees or rain gardens or something that could deal a little bit with the problem that there's not going to be as much infiltration. There's not going to be as many trees to take up the water that's in there. There's going to be excavation of large amounts of soil in order to provide for that foundation. And also to excavate the driveway, which I wasn't able to see clearly the plan for the driveway from the... Just the drawings of the house. But when I looked at the septic plan and I could see the elevations, I think that I... And I know that Mr. Morse had said this at the last meeting, that they're actually planning to cut in across the town right of way. And if you look at the plan, quite a bit of that driveway, about half of it, is actually located in the town right of way for Torrey's Lane, which is only a 15-foot roadway. And if the town, for any reason, ever wanted to widen that road, where it doesn't even meet the standards for a neighborhood, which I read in the guidelines, is 24 to 26 feet for a roadway. So it's 15 feet now. That right of way is there in order to provide for the widening of that roadway. And most of the driveway, about half of it, is in that right of way. And they're going to be cutting in. If you look closely at the plan, they're going to be cutting in to that elevation, and they're going... Which I sort of say to myself, okay, if you've got a hill and you're cutting a driveway in, well, that's going to mean that there's going to be a big, huge embankment on either side of that driveway. What plans have been made to grade those embankments, to do plantings along those embankments, to prevent the runoff from going right down in the driveway and right out? So I have concerns about the plan for the driveway and if it's really going to do the trick, and what's going to happen because of all the excavation there of the soil in that area, and the removal of all those plantings along the ridge. Again, if you look at the plan here, you see where the property line is. This land, all this land here belongs to the town. And they're actually, I think, you have to go out and take a look, some of those trees, it may even be on the town right of way. They may not even be on her property. So that's the other thing. I didn't see any survey, you know, sticks or tapes or anything out there to sort of show where those plantings are located, if they're located on the property... Her property or on the town right of way. So those are the stormwater and some of our landscaping concerns.
Just to add to that...
Please, one at a time.
Oh, yeah, I know. He wants to... He wants... He has things to say too.
That's okay.
I think the other thing that we are also very concerned about are the construction impacts. Again, I keep saying it, but it's a very narrow roadway. It's only 15 feet across. We're concerned about large construction vehicles being able to get in and out of the property to... You know, it's going to take large construction equipment to do all this excavation. And we're very concerned about whether they're going to operate and maneuver on the street directly across from our property without damaging and impinging on our property. And also, it's going to interfere with the right of way on the street. People won't be able to get by. And the noise. We thought we put that in there because we both, my husband and I, work at home. We have home offices, and so that is going to just make it difficult for us to work during the construction. And we just requested that you consider the zoning board of appeals decision and the discussion. It was a very short meeting. There really was no discussion of the environmental impacts, the impacts on the neighborhood, the residents. And I did feel, when I listened to the decision, that they really were kind of deferring a little bit to the planning board to make the decision about whether this accessory dwelling was an appropriate permit to grant, because it required two special permits, this project. And we also, I guess, I don't know if it's the right time to say this, but we would like to request that there be some kind of covenant in the event that there are issues with any kind of stormwater and things like that in the neighborhood and to our property as a result of this project. So, thank you very much. I know I've said a lot. We appreciate that you're listening to our concerns, and they took the time the last time to respond to them.
You're up now.
Just briefly.
You just identified some.
He's got more to say too.
John Harris. I live at nine Torrey's Lane across from the proposed property. It's just something real brief. You guys have probably seen these just photographs of just a small rainstorm, the kind of flooding that we get. And I just want to make sure that everyone sees that that photograph is taken right here, and that's where the end of the driveway is going to be. We already have this difficult land that, and we build up the soil every year, and it's right at the foot of this, right here. And I would just like to avoid a situation that unfortunately happened at Blanchard Farm Road here in Sitewood, where people thought that there were going to be stormwater plans and designs, but after the fact, there was a huge problem. And we don't want the same kind of problem here, because it happened again. And I think Mr. Morse is very aware of that, because he was the engineering firm that designed it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Patricia Murphy, seven-seater Crest Lane. Karen's always kept her house nice and neat for as long as she's lived there, and I heard from her personally a few years ago that it was mold that drove her out of her house, that she couldn't live there. And I was just diagnosed with asthma, so I can sympathize a little bit with that. However, I have been looking into just what's the construction that's been happening in this town in the last few years, and I have noticed by watching meetings and reading the paper and talking to neighbors and other people I know in town, there has been abutters who have paid the price for a new construction being abutting to their property where they're very unhappy about what is now happening because of this construction. And I just don't want that to happen to our neighborhood. I, um... My dad built our house, our home, in the early 1950s and provided a good, happy, safe life for us on Cedar Crest Lane. My dad, my mom, my brother, my sister, and I. It's just my sister and I, and she's in New York. So it's mine to carry on. He loved that house. He saw a vision, and I'm going to carry it on because I love my house, I love my neighborhood, and I love my town. And I don't want to see it ruined, like it has been recently with these developments. And I know certain people it's affected. First Parish Road, Blanchard Farm, I could go on and on, but very discouraged, some of these plans that have been approved in the last few years and how they've affected their abutters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, yes.
Mike Mopé at 21 Torrey's Lane, diagonally across the street, and it's just a main similar concern as Harris's voice that I'm like in a bowl there, and every... My sun pump runs almost 24/7 for weeks on end, and anything that we can do to mitigate runoff would really be appreciated. Making... Doing something that might make it worse just isn't a great idea. It's very high water table. We even have the pest control and to try and do the termite stuff. He couldn't put it in the ground because of groundwater too high. I mean, it's just too bad. So anything to mitigate would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ian?
Just, I wanted to... Yeah, I actually asked Greg a question, just to clarify. The driveway, since it was mentioned that going over the townway, the part of the driveway that goes over the townway is fairly straight, right? And then it goes up, pitches up? Is that correct?
Correct. From the edge of pavement to the edge of the right of way, the townway is... Just looking at the plan here, it's probably 10 or 15 feet in distance. How we've graded it off is we're not changing the grade of that first 10 or 15 feet. We match existing grade, and then we start sloping up onto the Lynch property, correct?
Just as a point of order, though, you know, almost every driveway in town goes over townway, right? Because the roads are usually smaller than the easements, so that in and of itself shouldn't be an issue. And if the town decided to widen the road, they would take part of your driveway out, so... And you wouldn't have anything you could do about it, right? I mean, because it is really town property. So I, you know, I'd just be careful about that, right? Your driveway probably does, and everybody else's probably goes over townway.
No, I just wanted to clarify that, basically, like, because I thought it was the fact that it was fairly straight, or like you said, matching the grade, and then pitching up... If I remember right, wasn't it about 7%?
Five.
5%?
5%.
Yeah. Sorry for making it, inflating it.
I would also say that, you know, just in terms of removal of trees on town property, we would not want to see that happen. And your septic system is going to be on your property, so it won't be on town property. So one of the things we'll... And we'll probably add it as a condition is that, you know, you don't remove any, obviously, any trees that are on town property.
We're not proposing to remove any trees on town property. Our septic is in compliance with type five. It is on our own property.
Right.
Would this tree be removed right here? Just... So I know...
The hue?
Karen, you...
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that going to be moved?
Might be a little trimmed in the back, you said.
Is that going to be...
And that's definitely on my property.
I'm just curious, just for my own good, just so I have it on.
The back of that would need to be trimmed and pruned, but I don't think it's the intention.
They're not going to take the whole thing out, just so I know?
I don't think it's our intention to take that whole thing out, no.
I'm just... I just... It's important, that's why I asked. Thanks. That's the only thing... It's the only evergreen that shields our house from the entire property, is that one thing. And frankly, that landscaping plan with hydrangeas, that's not going to do really a whole lot in the wintertime, you know? I think this landscaping plan is very inadequate for us.
Well, there's a holly. That's an evergreen. There's ewanumus. That's an evergreen.
Grasses.
Yeah, there's grasses.
And to... Just to allay some of the concerns, you know, at least, you know, I'm no engineer, but with the drywall system, the pervious driveway, and the drywall crushed stone, I would perceive that this would actually be much better than what's currently there, as far as the going off the slope. I know you... The standard is, it can't be any worse, or it can't be... That sounds bad, any worse, but...
Greater weight.
Yeah, exactly. It can't... It can't flow at a greater rate. But to me, it seems like this could actually, uh, decrease the flow onto Torrey's Lane. Is that a fair statement? I know that you can't go on record saying that, Greg, but I mean, you.
It's, it's not subject to the stormwater bylaw. Um, you know, during frozen conditions, when that lawn that's out there right now is frozen, you're getting close to a hundred percent runoff off of it. You will have a pervious driveway that's in place that will be free of snow, um, you know, and maintained. You have the roof system which is collected and put into drywells. So, I expect impacts to Torrey's Lane to be minimal.
Um. Couple, couple other issues that, um, came up and that had to do with construction impacts. And I assume there's, uh, there's going to be a, a way to manage the, uh, stormwater during construction so we don't end up with, um, anything drainage out onto the street, et cetera.
We proposed erosion control across the down gradient number four.
We're not going to have six trucks idling waiting for you.
You'll have deliveries of materials to the site, um, but typically, once they drop off a material, they leave, they go to their next job.
Um, and, and will construction parking be onsite?
Construction parking will be onsite. We can accommodate.
On the road?
Parking onsite, yes.
Okay. Um, any questions?
No, I, I don't have any questions. I certainly do understand people's frustration when the only constant we have in this world is change. And sometimes we really don't like that change. We all here do the very, very best we can. Um, the reality is this building, this structure, that has its section six finding from the zoning board of appeals. They, this young woman has the right to build this garage. And she's actually going one step further and telling us before the fact what she's going to do with the second floor. But as a matter of right, she can build that structure. Zoning board of appeals gave her her permit. And there's, we're trying to exacerbate the best way we can to lessen the impact through drywells, through perv, um, pervious driveway, some plantings. It's, we will not ever please everyone. There's no way that we can do that. But I think under the circumstances, it's better than it could have been.
I would concur.
Yeah, and I would also point out that, uh, among the other rights in town that, that everybody in town has approved is, is the right to apply to build an accessory dwelling, to be able to continue to live in town, to, um, to do all those things that I think everybody else, uh, would like to do in town. So, you know, we're also recognizing, uh, the right to, to build an accessory dwelling here too. And, um, that's part of our obligation as well as, uh, members of the planning board. So, I guess with that said, do we have a motion?
Did I make one more comment before?
Yeah, your last word.
Yeah, I, well, I just want to, uh, I, I want to bring up this whole issue of what recourse that we have, um, as abutters to any, I mean, I know that, you know, everyone here is, feels, you know, fairly confident that there's a good plan for controlling , uh, any stormwater and runoff and, and such things and, you know, um, but we know the neighborhood, number one. And secondly, I know how close our property is to all this construction that's going on. And I want to be assured that if there's any damage to our property, or if there's any future flooding or runoff and problems like that with, as a result of this construction, that there is going to be some recourse, that there's some kind of a covenant, that those problems are going to be addressed.
Well, I don't think we can.
Some of those things are, are going to be addressed through the conditions of discussion.
Right.
So, I guess that the recourse would be if.
If there's a violation.
Property owner is not following the conditions of the special permit, that's a something violation. And you go to the building department and you tell them, you know, this is what's going on and between them and the planning board and, you know, the planning office, um, we'll get together and plan some.
Is, is there a nighttime lighting plan of any kind? I mean, what kind of lights are we talking?
Well, this is another whole.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We're new to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know.
So, so the, the proponents, the applicant here and, and, you know, you know, it understands that it is their responsibility to take care of any, um, subsequent problems that happen that, that as a result of flooding and runoff and any damage to our property that results from the construction.
Well, you would always have that right for anybody damaging your property regardless of they were constructing anything or not, right? So, um, that, that certainly exists today. If somebody drove a car on your, on your front lawn, you'd have recourse, right?
Okay. All right, good. Yeah, I don't know. All right.
I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on June twenty, twenty seventeen, Karen Lynch applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling proposed to be in a detached garage on a single-family house lot at two Cedar Crest Lane. Two, according to the town of Situate's Assessor's Field Card, the existing house has a net area of one thousand eighty-eight square feet and three bedrooms. The accessory dwelling with one bedroom will be sixty-nine percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling. Based on the application, the interior floor space of the proposed accessory dwelling will be seven hundred forty-eight square feet. This is less than the maximum of seven hundred fifty square feet allowed by the zoning bylaw. The accessory dwelling meets the size requirements of section three twenty, three, five thirty point two F. It's getting late. Three, the property is a non, is non-conforming as to lot area. A special permit to allow expansion on a non-conforming lot was approved by the zoning board of appeals on July twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. Four, the location plan dated six, six seventeen shows two driveways. One is off Cedar Crest Lane. It is bituminous concrete and has room for at least two cars. The second driveway is off Torrey's Lane. It is proposed as a pervious material and has room for two cars. The new garage will also contain sufficient room for two vehicles. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and sufficient parking for the primary dwelling. Five, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will live on the property. Six, the detached garage complies with all required setback, building height, and yard requirements for primary structure. Seven, a memo dated July twenty, twenty seventeen from Jennifer Keith, health agent, indicates a four-bedroom septic system, septic design plan has been approved. Eight, there are two means of egress, a slider door to the deck and an outside stair to the garage. Nine, the application meets the standards of the zoning, Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Give a second. I second that. Second?
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at two Cedar Crest Lane with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on twelve, seventeen, fifteen. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Location Plan, Two Cedar Crest Lane, Situate, Mass. by Morse Engineering, dated six, six seventeen, with revisions through eight, eight seventeen, and elevations and floor plans, including drawings, A O, A one, A two, and E C general notes and details. Proposed floor plans, proposed elevations, and existing condition, conditions, floor plans dated eight, one sixteen, with revisions stamped in, on eight, eight seventeen for two Cedar Crest Lane. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. The number of bedrooms in the primary dwelling is limited to three. Three, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Four, per the direction of the DPW Water Division, the water service for the accessory dwelling can connect with that serving the existing house after the water meter or from a new service to be installed from Cedar Crest Lane. Under no circumstances is the accessory dwelling to be serviced by water from Torrey's Lane. Five, stormwater runoff must be contained onsite during construction and after construction is completed. In addition to a stabilized construction entrance and silt sock to be located at the downhill side of the property along Torrey's Lane, stormwater runoff during construction shall be directed to one or more siltation sumps or devices approved by the planning office that is appropriately sized to handle runoff during construction. This device and other erosion control shall be in place and inspected by the planning office prior to any foundation work commencing. The applicant shall inform her contractor that he or she is required to contact the planning office prior to the start of construction. A construction sequence of activities shall be provided to the planning office with detail for erosion control, foundation, building, and septic system installations. Six, a new site plan shall be submitted showing a detail of the previous pavers, of the pervious pavers, a construction sequence of activities and stormwater runoff control measures as described in condition five. The decision shall not be filed with the town clerk until this new plan is satisfactorily submitted to the planning office. The new site plan shall include the above as well as an operation and maintenance plan for the pervious pavers to preserve their ability to infiltrate stormwater. Yearly documentation of maintenance must be provided to the planning office. Seven, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal slash federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Eight, six evergreen shrubs of a minimum size of three feet shall be installed between the impervious barrier of the septic system and property line to help screen the accessory dwelling. A plan shall be provided to the planning board prior to implementation. Nine, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for the, um, for recording at the registry of deeds.
Oh, I just had a question. Not, I don't know if it's matters. One of the points you were talking about is the bedroom shown on the plan. Like, I'm looking at the plan here and it actually doesn't say bedroom. Like, it doesn't, as we talked about, it's not really shown anywhere. So it's just, is that okay?
Yeah.
I, I think what we should ask is that you file an updated plan once you've defined the bedroom.
Okay.
Because this is still limited to one.
Right. Right. I can do that. Thank you.
So, we should just.
All right, and the, the applicant will provide an updated floor plan once the bedroom has been installed. Sounds good.
Before the bedrooms is.
Let me see.
I just want to see before they build it.
We just want to know it's one bedroom.
Right.
Well, I just was concerned because it said the bedroom's location shown on the plan. And I'm like, well, it doesn't show on the plan, so.
Right.
Um, is there anything else we wanted to address here? I think that's everything. Anything else?
It looks like, uh, I wanted to make sure that the elevations were adhered to and that, that was in there.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a second as amended?
I second that as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What? The what? Actually, I don't want it. No, thank you. Now we have to.
This is going to end with this little.
Right. And now we have to deal with our progress.
Okay.
Is this the last one?
It's almost ten thirty, so let's see if we can move this along here. Um, is that at Blanchard Farm Lane? Are, are folks here for that?
Of course.
Come on up. Okay, um, Laura, do you have a, kind of a summary on this at this point?
Sure. Um, and if I forget anything, I'll just, uh, correct. So, back at the end of June, um, the planning board met to talk about what to do about the arborvitie having been taken out on, um, seven Blanchard Farm Lane. That's, um, lot eight, uh, number seven. And the vote was that, um, under some discussion, uh, back and forth with the quins, the vote was to extend the fence beyond the driveway, um, you know, going off a little bit into the yard, you know, maybe just a couple of feet. It really wasn't defined what the distance was. Um, I've been going back and forth a lot with, uh, the Christoforos as well as the quins about this, um, but from the Christoforos' point of view, they don't want to have that fence extended. And, um, just as a kind of point of information, the arborvitie, you know, there was never any discussion about any kind of barrier that extended beyond the driveway. So I think to, to extend it that way, um, that property is privately owned now. I think you need the permission of the property owner. And they have agreed to install a fence. The fence is going to be behind the grasses that they put in, so it should look, you know, attractive from their angle. The fence will be there. The light probably won't, you know, as far as I can tell, there's no way the light is going to get through it. Um, and anyway, so that's, that's that side of it. Um, the quins feel, I believe, if I, if I can speak for them, which, you know, you can't speak for anyone else, but, um, the quins feel that the agreement was made, that the fence was going to be longer, and that agreement should not be changed, period. Because I think they felt vulnerable to a whole lot of different, um, like nuisances coming from Blanchard Farm. Um, so we can't have it, you know, we can't have it both ways. And I think there was a need to have the planning board hear this discussion rather than, um, it being made in the office. The other issue that came up, um, which, I don't know if it's even really an issue, but, um, a question came up about taking out one dead tree. It's a maple. It's got about an eighteen-inch diameter to it. It's not a, a small tree, but it's dead. And you look up, there's no branches coming out of it. You see the dead branches, um, kind of, uh, in a bunch at the top. And they'd like to remove that tree. There are also big, big branches overhanging their yard that come from that area, and they'd like to remove those, I believe going back to the twenty feet from, you know, you're not going to go back within.
The overhang, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's something else they wanted to do. And just given the, um, the very high level of sensitivity around any kind of change in that area, it seemed wise to bring that to the planning board.
Okay. So we have, um, does that fairly characterize everything on both sides? I think she did a great job. Okay. All right.
And just so I understand and remember, originally, when we did this, when I say the very first time, it was just the arborvitie trees that was, that was part of the condition, correct? There was never any fence?
There wasn't ever a condition. It was kind of a, uh.
And they were in the locations that the grasses are in now.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Which is where the fence would go.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Yes, sir?
I'd like to correct the record.
Just identify yourself.
My name is Tom Quinn, and I'm in a butter. I'd like to correct the record as Ms. Harbaugh just presented it. Ms. Harbaugh presented that the, the house and the driveway was changed unbeknownst to the town of Situate. But in January two thousand sixteen, I brought this to the town's attention, both to the building department and to the planning, to the town planner. So, they were on notice that the driveway was located in the wrong spot. Now, besides that, I hired an attorney, and I brought this to the board's attention, to the planning board's attention, that this would be a nuisance, this, the headlights sweeping the back of my house. I believe Mr. Cristoforo submitted a letter presenting his position and wasn't here at the last meeting. And at that meeting, this board unanimously voted that the screening should be placed, and Mr. Pritchard drafted that motion and left it, I don't have the exact wording, but you had enough to block. The fence should be wide enough to block and eradicate the sweeping lights to the back of my house. So, it's not as if the town of Situate wasn't on notice that this driveway was moved.
Yeah, well, we are where we are right now, right?
I know we are where we are, but I, I brought this to the town's attention that this would be a nuisance.
We'll let the record reflect that you made that statement about it. What we'd like to do is get to resolution here. And, you know, one of the things we, we didn't have the benefit of was the other party on this in terms of, in terms of your perspective, so I think one of the things Laura had suggested is just to give everybody the opportunity to be at the same place at the same time talking about this issue. My, my question on this is, really has to do with how, how much of an impact is there if we put the fence and it stops at the end of your driveway? What's the window, if you will, light shining if somebody's pulling in the driveway?
Now, can you define what that means, end of driveway? I think that's where there's been some confusion.
Well, I'm just looking at his driveway right here, right?
Okay, that's what you're referring to, okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's what you've...
What's proposed.
Proposed, right? Would it go to the end of the driveway or the end of the berm?
End of the...
There's a little berm here?
Is that what the tree line would be?
Yeah.
So, it goes to the end of that?
So, does it come to the end of this?
Correct.
So, it's slightly past the driveway?
It's even past, correct.
Okay.
It's twenty-nine feet.
Okay. So, if, if it goes there, the question is, how much of an impact is there? These cars driving in?
There, I mean, that should block everything, in my opinion.
And we're talking about, how often does it happen? Night, once, twice?
We have a one-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old. We don't go out late, so I don't really think it's ever really an issue, but in the winter, it's obviously darker earlier, so could be then, but regardless, the six-foot tall fence is going to definitely shield that significantly better than the trees would have, so...
So, I guess I throw it out again, and maybe you can speak to this. We don't have anybody who's lined up sightlines and all that kind of stuff here, but it sounds like this will address ninety percent of the problem here?
No.
Nope?
In our opinion, when we're at the back of our house and he comes in off the street or they come in, and in future years coming in, those lights, he shoots his car straight in, it comes from Blanchett Farm, and he's right on, so the, the headlights, I mean, we, we sit there and see it, so the headlights come in and hit the back of our sliding windows at, at the end of our living room, and they're, they're right there. And then, yes, he eventually turns and heads into his driveway.
But we're talking about putting a fence here now, so the question is...
The fence is only, he's proposing twenty-nine feet out. When you're coming in from Blanchett Farm, you first come in, and he's going in, another, he's going in about maybe ten feet straight on at our living room, and then he starts to turn.
Into the fence. But, but he's going to be into the fence, though, right? So...
I guess you don't get it.
Potentially, no. When you're on Blanchett Farm at the cul-de-sac, wouldn't, not just his driveway, but wouldn't any car have the effect that you're talking about, per se? Me, I guess what I'm saying, the only way to solve what you're saying is literally to have the fence go all the way to Blanchett Farm, which is not any reasonable...
Well, we're not proposing that. When you drive into a driveway, pardon me, you're driving down the driveway, and then you're coming into a side-load garage, the car, the headlights are facing directly at the board now, my hand being the car. So, if the fence only comes out to here, the headlights pass the fence. So, wherever the driveway comes in, and then you make the left to get into the driveway, we'd like to have the fence go beyond so that when the dri, when the car comes down the driveway, the lights would hit a fence and not be hitting my house.
And how long does this disturbance last?
Um, I, if you want, I could create a log, but during the winter, during the winter...
That's not what I'm asking.
How long is the disturbance?
How long do you see the lights?
For as long as he's driving the car into the driveway.
Which is about...
But when the fence is there, it will be cut significantly down.
And in the past, I believe he's had company come over, and they're, they're shining their lights in the back of our house.
I would feel that if someone had put a light up on their house, a spotlight or whatever that was on for hours, I would have a huge problem with that. And I would discuss it with my neighbor and ask them to shut it off. I think the Cristoforos have, in one sense, bent over backwards here. They own the property, they've spent a lot of money. You own your property, you've spent a lot of money. If, you have to work it out. I mean, we, this, I've been on this board now for eighteen months, and there is not one month that goes by that we're not talking about Blanchett Farm.
And why is that?
Well, because, you know what? I have to tell you, Mr. Quinn, in all honesty...
Yeah.
Mistakes were made.
How many?
It doesn't matter.
A lot.
At our expense.
Please, may I finish?
Let's get into an argument here.
Please. We understand that, and we appreciate that, and we have worked very long and very hard to fix those drainage issues, et cetera. Now, the Cristoforos are going to put up a twenty-nine-foot fence that is six feet tall. I, for one, cannot ask them to do anymore. I think that that's more than sufficient and more than adequate. And we can, as I said earlier this evening, we can please some of the people some of the time, and some people are just going to be upset forever.
So, the motion that you made two weeks ago is null and void, and doesn't matter what, what the quins say, it's a matter of what the Cristoforos say.
No, it's a matter of what is in the...
Yes, that's what you're deciding.
And June twenty-second, this board voted...
You set headlights, and we said another four feet might help.
The reason, the reason we're all here tonight is we heard one side of the conversation at that point in time. We felt it was important to give every Situate resident the opportunity to be heard out.
But he submitted a letter with his, his point.
And that's, that's what we're hearing tonight, and that's what we're going to decide on tonight. It would be much better if, you know, the two parties could get together and sort of figure out an acceptable compromise, but if, if you're asking us to do that, we will try to find a compromise that solves both parties' issues.
Whether he, he decides that another four feet might, might help or mitigate, as you put it, he's going to, he's going to set his feet in the sand and say, no, I'm not going to put another four feet. I don't care what the quins say, whether the lights sweep or not. He's going to put it to where he thinks we're ninety percent covered, and he doesn't sit, he, he's not in my backyard, and he's not in my, my living room, so he doesn't know. And this is forever until the end of time. It's like, this whole, this whole problem should have been taken care of a year and nine months ago, and I knew exactly what was going to end up happening, and it has happened. We do not want to be here. We don't want to be fighting about a fence and bushes and ornamental grasses.
Nor do we.
Nor do we.
We do not either.
Ambermine, last March twenty-fourth and, and two thousand and sixteen, she said, I would have a real problem with the headlights. I would have a real problem.
And now he is, he is putting up a fence. Is it perfect? No.
Hey.
And he's putting it up at his expense.
And I just want to clarify, just to ask a clarifying question. The quins, are you asking for, is it four feet? Is that, would that be acceptable?
No, all I'm asking for is, if we want to get technical, I'll hire a lighting engineer and have him figure out, because Ms. Burbine wanted to know the timeframe.
That's not what I was, I meant. How many seconds, when he's coming down his driveway, until he pulls in?
It doesn't matter, it's a nuisance. It, it doesn't matter. You kind of know the answer is basically to that question, but it's a nuisance.
Five seconds.
Five seconds.
Last February or January, in the middle of the winter, Mr....
I have it in my bedroom, and I put up room darkening blinds. End of story.
Well, and, and what I was trying to ask earlier is, let's just assume that those arborvitae's didn't die, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here, right? They would be there. That was the original condition, were those trees.
The original...
So, if they, no, we agreed on that, if they...
We were waiting to see how fast those things would grow.
We didn't agree to that.
We're not getting any weight here.
We didn't agree to that. Mr. Morse came in here and said, we're, we're proposing arborvitae's for screening.
Never known that to Adam Bronstein.
It was never a question to the quins as to what would help to mitigate the problem...
I think we've, I think we've heard both sides of the equation here, so, and we're not going to make anybody happy, so I think we should just make a decision here.
I, you are willing to pay for this fence, is that correct?
Correct, as we proposed.
Okay. You want four more feet on this fence, correct? Yes or no?
We do want more, yes.
You want four more feet, is that correct?
That would help.
That would help. Now, let me ask you this, Mr. Cristofori. If they kicked in for that extra four feet, would you be willing to extend that to thirty-three feet?
Probably not, because of the appearance of it, and we already feel like we're going above and beyond with the fact.
I can fully understand that, I can. And under the circumstances, I think you have gone above, and you're paying for this. And the other thing, I suppose if you wanted to, you could put a fence across your back lot, high enough so that you wouldn't, that you wouldn't see the lights coming into your room, but you don't have the space because your septic system, which you received a variance for, and therefore it could be construed that you created your own hardship because you can't put...
Ms. Burbine, I, I have to correct your statement now. I didn't get a variance for thirty Whittier Drive, the previous owner did when they sold the house.
Yeah, I didn't, we had nothing to do with that.
That's fine.
All right.
We don't need to get into septic systems, right?
Now, I think that he, his decision, he's willing to pay for this, I say, fine, let's be done with it.
Yeah, I feel like, as a compromise, you've gone above and beyond what was necessary, or what we, what I feel the board agreed on initially, which may not have been what you agreed on, but we agreed that those screening for the arborvitae's trees, and this is above and beyond that. And you're not going to ever mitigate no lights. I mean, we live in a community, we all have to live together.
But the driveway was in the front, like, originally proposed, and it's...
This is a board conversation at this point, so let's try to keep the conversation here, all right? Unless you, you want a debate.
No, like I said, I, I think that the Cristoforos have gone above and beyond, and I would certainly recommend...
Mr. Pritchard, do you have a copy of the memo that you...
I think you either take the fences, the fences offered, or you don't.
Okay.
The choice is either yes or no.
I just have one comment. I haven't been here for, I'm new to the board, I haven't been here for a lot of the decisions, things going on. This just goes to Ann's, back to Ann's point. I'm just looking at this objectively from bird's eye view, and I'm, I like to build consensus amongst people and not have bad blood. I've lived in this town my whole life, and I don't really like some of these dialogues going on between new developments and neighbors. So, this goes back to what Anna mentioned about the four feet. I, I understand the four feet of fence going out looks, I agree, it's kind of bizarre, but I understand the functionality in order to act as a screening for the lighting. This kind of is going off Ann's idea, and this is like informal, okay, but would you, if the quins were willing to pitch in financially, would you be willing to design a small landscaped bed off of that corner of the driveway that perhaps contained an evergreen tree that would grow to sufficient diameter to account for that four feet?
Could I propose blinds in their screen door? I mean, why does it always have to be on our property? I mean, I, I don't know, I can't make that decision right now, but I, I feel like we've already made our decision, and we're doing more than we should, so...
Okay, you have an option.
I move that the planning board accept the Cristoforos twenty-nine-foot, six-foot fence.
I second that. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is there a trace, a name there?
I abstain, I abstain. I don't want to touch this. I didn't, well, I didn't vote at the last...
Did you, did you not vote?
I didn't vote.
Why?
Okay, all opposed?
Do I have something to say? I have a lot to say about it now.
All opposed?
Okay.
So, you're not voting? You abstain, okay. So, it's four.
What about the trees? The trees seem like they're, you know, I'm not sure if they're even...
Take it down.
Thank you.
Take it down.
Yeah.
Take it down.
Just that it's resolved, not that it's one side or the other, but just that it's resolved.
We're done.
We're done.
We're done.
Right. I know, I know neither side's happy.
Nope.
But, you know, sometimes that's what happens in the compromise situation, and...
The town caused it, the town caused it.
And we are here, and hopefully you can both learn to live with it.
We have nothing against the Cristoforos, the town caused this. The planning department, the planning board, the building department.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. We have four, ma'am.
Thank you very much. We need to pop a new disc game, because we've been on our four hour...
Oh, God.
We're going to take like a five-minute break.
Stewardia Realty Trust. This is a vacant piece of land off of Summer Street, located right at the Situate in Norwell Town Line. Summer Street is a publicly accepted roadway. It's paved. It does not have a water main located within it, but it does have access to electricity. A well has been installed on this property. What we're proposing to do is, we're proposing to divide this property into two lots. The wetlands here have been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. This is in the R-one zoning district, meaning each lot needs a hundred feet of frontage and forty thousand square feet of upland. The plan depicts lot one being four and a half acres in size, one point nine acres of that being upland area. Lot two is nine acres in size, four point two-nine acres of that is upland area. Both have the requisite hundred feet or more of frontage on Summer Street. I had presented a similar plan to this board about a year ago, dividing this property up into three lots. We've abandoned that project, and we're coming back with a two-lot plan at this point.
And the upland area is right along the street, is that right? Is that what you mean?
On lot one, yeah, there's a swath of the wetlands through the middle. Lot one, the buildable area is up along the front. Lot two, out front, you wouldn't really have any buildable area, you could possibly have it out back.
Is there any access to the back?
Oh, there is, okay.
Is there?
There's, there's a couple of ways to access the back, but what's required is the hundred feet of frontage along the front. It would require either a wetland crossing to the buildable area, or there is an easement, I believe, that there's rights to.
Yeah, it says twenty-five right away.
On the Norwell side?
Yep.
Is that right?
Correct. Runs through to Norwell.
The people in Norwell don't necessarily agree with that.
Fully understand that.
Would you say?
The people in Norwell don't agree that there's an easement there.
Okay.
So...
You need frontage and area.
That's all we need. We don't need anything else. And access. I move to endorse this approval, not required, a plan of land in Situate in Norwell, Massachusetts, showing a division of parcel seventeen dash four dash twenty-eight by William J. McGovern, PLS of Morse Engineering Company, Inc., for the Stewardia Realty Trust...
What'd you say?
The people in Norwell don't agree that there's an easement there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so...
You need frontage and area.
That's all we need. We don't need anything else. I move to endorse this approval, not required, a plan of land in Situate in Norwell, Massachusetts, showing division of parcel 17-4-28 by William J. McGovern, PLS of Morse Engineering Company, Inc., for the Stewardia Realty Trust date July 24th, 2017, as the division of land is not a subdivision because lots one and two have adequate access, and the amount of frontage required by the zoning bylaw on Summer Street a public way. The plan is endorsed with the following notes added, that the planning board endorsement is not a determination as to conformance with the zoning regulations, and the plan is only endorsed for frontage and access from the 301.22 feet on Summer Street in Situate and not on any right-of-way in Norwell.
You have a second? I second that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Why is that there?
The determination needs to be made that there's frontage and area. That's all we're asking for.
I don't have any problem taking this out, 'cause you always have that stamp.
Yeah.
I think you wanted before the second time, so that's what I put in the third time.
No, that's, Summer Street a public way.
Which time is the chapter?
There you go. We don't need that.
We have a second as amended?
As amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. There you go.
Well, we already did minutes and bills.
And you guys did that while I wasn't here?
Yeah.
Very efficient. That's too seated, Chris. Um...
Flash. Can we go home now?
Entertained Bill's motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Do we need to save any of this?
Where's Karen?
What do we need to save on, um, Marshfield Avenue? Anything?
I would just save everything.
Oh, shit, I don't want to do that.
Save the application.
Throw that away. I don't need that. No, I can't get over...
By the way, just so you know...
What then?
I've saved actually every piece, stitch of paper over the last, what, six?
Why?
Eight years.
Why?
Someday he's gonna get a fireplace.
Just in case.
Can you walk through your living room?
Uh, it's in the planning board closet.
So Patty...
Do you only need two?
I know.
Karen, do you need two or three of these?
Patty.
Does somebody else have one of these?
Oh, is that the A and R?
What? Who's, where, on Ocean? I have no idea. Yeah?
Where, which, which?
Wow.
Oh, here's your pen.
Yeah.
Do I have the wrong vintage of zoning bylaws? What's the latest version?
Yeah.
This is all I got.
On Gannett?
I think that, that didn't need that. We got it from Orver, the house, Marshfield Ave. It's probably appropriate. They, they hardly did anything.
I know, they, they did nothing. They did nothing. Really, very, you didn't, did you stick around, you didn't stay around for plant for, um, yeah? No, enough is enough.
So Laura, are you gonna talk to town council?
Yeah.
Yeah, just let me know when you're gonna do it, and I'll see if I can plug in.
Would you fill out the, the blue file, what's the home?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's okay with me. I just, I'd like to make sure that...